Just to watch you, just to watch you, just to watch you.
Some check one, two? Eh, Dumealanga, Lochani, Avusheni, eh, Dimasharoni, Khuyemore. Good morning! Greetings? Eh, my name is Ntivimudise.
Alina lakaki Ntivimudise?
I am the acting chairperson of the Portfolio Committee of Forestry, Fisheries and Environment.
Kina mduula, mduula mtausere wa koro ya kagodiwa ditlapi litigulu.
I am a member of parliament.
Kililokola paramente?
Eh, from the National Assembly.
Ojua korun kulu ya mushawasichawa.
I am leading a delegation to Mbumalanga this weekend.
Ki tlepele ke meli etile ngamulungu Mbumalanga ma felelungu Abigailu?
Eh, I'm not too sure if the dogs eh are loose.
Ra kina wuneti ya ore, di mja di deta mizi, dibofilu na.
Ore, di, 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 di amata amata monkema.
Or are they loose, running everywhere in the vicinity?
Eh, but the way you are beautiful today.
Marakamukoli wembo zika onamamka.
For a Sunday for that matter.
Eh, kubuja chindelu la lamurana la sonta.
I suspect that there are no dogs out there.
Kina le kono noya kulu ya ore, kagonadi mja jedi gitima omu.
Diro onadinja?
Are they there? Are there any dogs?
Dibofilu. Are they? Otanaditing mar dibofili.
Oh, they are there, but they've been tied.
Oh, okay. Eh, rela, rela uga when we are officially welcome.
We will hear that very amgalasi mushu.
Eh, I am with Honorable Weber.
Kinali eh mutomperi Weber?
I can only greet you, Nzulisa Sunny Benani.
Tukona kuli mja felela kasi.
Niapila.
Eh, Honorable Weber is a member of the Portfolio Committee.
Mutomperi Weber ki lelokoala committee ya portfolio?
Eh, she's a member of parliament representing the Democratic Alliance.
Kililokola paramente uemechi Democratic Alliance?
Mari mogi member ya parliament.
Mo, kililokola paramente?
I am with Honorable Gando.
Kinali mutomperi Gando?
Thank you, check. Good morning, everyone.
Kiala duwi mja kamuka?
My name is Ngabisaka Gando.
Alina lakaki Ngabisaka Gando?
I'm a member of this Portfolio Committee.
Kililokola co, eh, committee ya portfolio?
I am representing African National Congress.
Emechi African National Congress?
Thank you.
Kiala bo?
Eh, Honorable Gando otsako Eastern Cape.
Honorable Gando is from the Eastern Cape.
Honorable Weber is from Mbumalanga.
Mutomperi Weber otan Mbumalanga.
I think I must register the apology of Honorable Faith Mutambi.
Eh, ki tlo leti visha tabaya o palalokuru fitlara mutomperi Faith Mutambi?
Eh, a member of the committee and the chairperson representing the ANC.
Lelokoala committee uye lomduula stula rapewa emechiro ANC.
Another apology is from Honorable Bantu Olomisa.
Omuwa palachiro kurota ki mutomperi Bantu Olomisa?
Eh, a member of the committee representing the UDM.
Lelokoala committee uemechiro UDM?
Eh, Honorable Dave Bryan representing the DA.
Mutomperi Dave Bryan uemechiro eh DA?
Eh, Honorable Nazir Paulsen representing the EFF.
Mutomperi Nazir Paulson uemechiro EFF?
Honorable Tembe Kamtunu representing the ANC.
Mutomperi Tembe Kamtunu uemechiro ANC?
Honorable Simpiwembata representing the ANC.
Mutomperi Simpiwembata uemechiro ANC?
And then you have the most handsome one.
Eh, arinali omu wosoko ba palakamuka?
Lea muziba masi.
Do you know that person?
Lea muziba masi?
You know that person, I believe.
Ken?
That's my son!
Right, and then my name is Ntivimudise, like I said, I'm representing the ANC too.
Na ki Ntivimudise ki libula ki opusana ka libudiche ore ke emechi ANC?
Eh, because we are running a bit out of time.
Ka ora na kui tui tui mlewa ore shiya?
Eh, I want us to get underway with business of the day.
Kina kare, tulepele kama shumale chaachi.
Eh, I want to acknowledge and confirm to you.
Kera tagu amgalaluku litishale chaore?
Eh, we have interpreters from parliament.
Arinala ba fe tuledi ba kuto paramente?
They speak almost all the languages.
Babu lela di pulalo kamo, kagusana kama kogidiya onakana biel?
All of them.
Kamu kakacho?
Le Africans.
Le Africans?
All of them.
Kamu kakacho?
So as we participate today.
Very garebo lela mulekuni.
Eh, you are free to use the language of your choice.
Lukulu kangu shunsha malemi ai longuore, letayoku alilukulu kileka ona?
When we were told that we were coming to Bushbuck Ridge.
Very bo tjuango reswanku retle Bushbuck Ridge?
Eh, we were told that we must know eh sitsoonga.
Rila ra, bo tjuango reswanku retsebe sitsoonga?
I said, "Mina, I will learn there."
Na kile karaka taitutu so na kanakuwa?
Ntabula vula liye.
Le na kita bo lela kibifita kanakuwa?
So sian mfigile.
Eh, bieliki fitili?
Na vula vula swish.
Ifitili, bieliki abolela?
Yeah. Eh, I'm going to request that we all rise.
Ki tlo kopele or kama kareme kama o tu?
Eh, bon tate barule dikatiba.
Eh, all gentle men must remove their heads.
Then we sing the national anthem, we get into business.
Aropele ko sha yasichaba.
Thank you very much.
Kiala bo?
Eh, I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the presence of the executive mayor of Bushbuck Ridge Municipality Council Anumalo.
Ki rotaku lebo ga, ololu leti visha ka ketelo ya mou Ramuti wa Bushbuck Ridge?
Eh, and all members of the mayoral committee who are here.
Le maluko kamo ga akumiti ya Ramuti aleguwa namu?
All councillors who are here.
Ma councillor kama ka leguwa namu?
And eh traditional leaders who are here.
Ba etapele basi tio baba leguwa namu?
And eh all the stakeholders, but most importantly, all of you.
Le benitseka kamo, kape kabo zivu tesevo tokalo kofi itakore, lele na kamo ga?
But with that being said.
Very fediche cheka mka kakacho ona?
I wish to invite the executive mayor.
Ki rata ore, ki am, ki meme mou Ramuti mou kulu?
So that she can tell us if indeed the dogs are tied.
Ore, ataru buche kabo zivu zikile ore kana neti, mja chela dibofilu kato abo chaku diya na.
Executive mayor.
Eh, Ramuti? Ankenzi program director, Akilebore program director, Angbonke program director, lis katsum persona, eh, ntsense, nka lenkubingelela, nishokuze Bushbuck Ridge, si sebenisa three languages, African languages, eh, itivas changani, itivas swazi, sati futi lis pulan. So re lukuluri le today, ore kabulela kaufele di pulalo che, esibarulich. So let me first acknowledge more harina hunali maluka. Oh my goodness, I must wait for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Not used to that one, but it's fine. Yeah, so I just, eh. Eh, mangbonke kutse paga tugune malunga eh parliament eh chairperson, acting chairperson, Ubabe Mudise.
Thank you, we would like to thank the presence of Honorable Mudise.
Na labahamba na bo eh, lababia eh parliament.
And eh full, his full entourage from parliament.
Si, fina futi speaker we tuakamaspala councillor Ruth.
We have our speaker councillor Ruth.
MMC ma tablea next to me.
Eh, na eh MMC eh loya angatsamakwene na mina.
Eh, kunabangwana ilava ya bangatsamala MMC eh Kubai, MMC eh Ngomane, na dikansala slavangakona.
Eh, following by those who are seated there, MMC Kubai and the other MMC and all the other councillors sitting closer to her.
Abaknoleja, ndabona what twenty-three MMC eh councillor Ndjulis, that side, ndambona?
Eh, amkele na councillor Ndjulie, le tlo, I can also see.
The member at what committees?
And all the members of what committees?
The CDWs.
And CDWs?
Eh, traditional authority, ilaa ingakona ileka Hoshi Macheho.
Nabu osi, eh, ala ingakoa ileka Osimashiho.
Eh, na community sinkuwa ya Bushbuck Ridge, ndamkele ibitarama timbarais, amen.
And the entire community from Bushbuck Ridge will welcome you in the name of Jesus, amen.
Inatatanasili ndalanga responsible for fire and rescue in the municipality?
We have eh Honorable Sil, eh, Mr. Silinda, who's responsible for fire in the community.
Inkuenu amkele once more eka Bushbuck Ridge local municipality.
We welcome him, all of us from Bushbuck Ridge Municipality.
Just kuwandimika nyana ku Bushbuck Ridge indawiyan jan?
Let me give you an overview of how the setup in Bushbuck Ridge.
Bushbuck Ridge is a rural municipality with eighty-eight wards.
Bushbuck Ridge is municipality wale makaya longuana thirty-eight ward.
Fortunately, it's under the leadership of the African National Congress.
Kutanse seseleswai taki sayaku urangile eh urangeri bja ANC.
So let's nivula kasho ku is a municipality no unga na the what committees, na the CDW, na the councillors?
Therefore, I say this is a municipality that is comprised of all structures as mentioned.
Yes, so ilaa kabo Bushbuck Ridge, shesinkarwatingoma for your information.
Eh, during this time, this is the time for initiations, the traditional initiations.
Solo komi blabla iti failed fire, it means nabu we must take note that we are having kids lavangale tingo men as we speak.
Eh, if you are referring to them, enti solefsa kunabo ovaleka process yele yaku yisawa na tingo men.
If eh, I'm told that they will be out on the, on the fifth of August.
Eh, nditseruleleswakwata oma eti fif, five da August?
Yes, twenty-twenty-two.
Yele mbelera?
So issue of fire, like we are saying, it affect us irimaspala wa Bushbuck Ridge?
Eh, dimakata amenzilo ta ikumba tani iba aki, iba akiwale Bushbuck Ridge?
So namuntla itzakiileku, we are going to discuss ita natinlela ku ingachincha chincha kwini la ibonakashri suta shita ifamisakala.
We are glad that today you are here to discuss so that you can amend in order to eh answer to the challenges that we have.
Eh, namuntla iswamina kuwanati long speeches?
Eh, today is not my day for long speeches.
Ikuvandim amkele nenim chunshaku, miwa mi free ku participate eka this eh public hearing.
Mine is to give you a time so that you can be able to deliver what you came here for and to tell you that you are free to do so.
Inkuasosu kase sime indala konan, komba lakui participate iba itchunshakiile.
All is in order, may you please participate freely?
Indala le akuna tinjwanaye Bushbuck Ridge?
In this way, we are saying eh our dogs are safely kept in Bushbuck Ridge.
Ti ranee esu inmitirele eka bangwana so that ikumana solution, let me itai present her in parliament.
Let us work properly so that we can come up with solutions that can be presented at parliament.
Indala ele kiri, ele amrele rile Bushbuck Ridge, mi amkele kile eh Bushbuck Ridge, si anemgeela eh Bushbuck Ridge local municipality nyabon?
Thank you.
Eh, ikensile major.
Thank you, madam.
Major, nikensile. Yeah, inko.
Thank you.
Logun blabula la uni to.
I want you to hear me as I speak.
Yeah, eh, logunfamba la, ntafamba nbulabula sitsoonga.
Eh, when I leave here, I will live eh with my perfect sitsoonga.
Am I, am I verbet?
Singa waso, shekileki.
Yeah.
You are eighty percent correct.
Saint Africa.
I will be there.
Inkoo.
Thank you.
Eh, without waste of time, eh, thank you very much, executive mayor.
Anteko etanka role eh executive mayor?
It's nice to be here.
Ya ken sa kuwa erela, satsakis?
Is it nice to be here?
Sha, shana satsakisakubala anke?
Kumna ndukubala. Is it nice to be here?
Shana satsakisakubala anke?
Kumna ndukubala.
Satsakisakubala anke?
Right, I like the response. The same way, the same response that we get when we ask if it's nice to be here is the same response that we expect when we make inputs.
Eh, ilewsi mi tu komseka iso, ilewsi itzaki sagu, itzaki lakulisa ku miwashi solokumi garemi nyika lesu meka ta nyika so.
Eh, and I saw all the people who said, "It's nice to be here."
Niwabu ni lenkuwa blavangakensa, waku satsakisakuba erola.
So if they don't stand up when we request people to make input, I'll point them, you said it's nice to be here.
Logu wangai mi, logu okurenka rovula sokar, nta wakombe tela erati okuru, miwuri le mfu melale saku sakkenseka nutzaki sakubameri la namutla.
And ninety-nine point nine percent of these all said it's nice to be here.
Ninety-nine point nine whati percent etala olu, enwapu merile no kensele saku satsakisakubala namutla.
So it means ninety-nine point nine percent is going to make an input on this bill.
So wulaleswaku ninety-nine point nine whati percent, ewata imala wa ini kamarungula yabo?
It's nice to be here.
Satsakisakubala anke?
Kumna ndukubala. Oh, even that one person has now spoken.
Na, ambu du percent leyo etelela se na woba pume ri.
So it means everybody is going to speak and make an input.
So wulaleswaku uwa na uwa nuwa enaitabula vula ay nyika lesu atzaki lakui nyika so.
Bomel motad, let me tell you why we are here.
Baba wana wat manana, imanimpzela leswaku, ikoko la ukua inamtla erela?
Eh, I am sure you must have heard that parliament is coming down to Bushbuck Ridge.
Nasemba, mesutuile leswaku Bushbuck Ridge, eh la Bushbuck Ridge, leswaku paramente ile kuten namutla.
Eh, this is our third day in Mbumalanga, executive mayor.
Le resukura enarabu naru kufika la namutla.
We started in eh Hertzbande, in Emelo.
Isungulele Hertzbande, Emelo.
And we went to Tembisilehany.
Kutanke ya eh Tembisilehany?
In Kangala.
In Kangala.
And today we're in Elanzeni.
Namuntla ela Elazeni.
Yeah, and eh late last night, I was discussing with the colleagues, executive mayor.
Tolonma jamba nikarani burisanana waterekuluri?
Because from here, we are going to catch a flight in Houting.
Ekukusuka la etakanziasha amfukale Houting?
We are going to kazu nata.
Se ya le kazu?
For the same process.
Iya tirantiro ufaana nawalu.
But we started in the beginning of Mbumalanga.
Isungulele Mbumalanga isu kelakako.
And then we came further eh east.
Kutanke ya etsunelala le wupu.
Why didn't we start here? And we go to eh that side?
Ikoko la ukua eni ngasungulangala, kutani tlala lenza kulewupela jamu.
I think it's something we must look at, Chiles.
Atsamba, ilewsi ay fanele, si la wutala wutile.
Right, but who I help is him?
Kambeke sa itzakiis?
And this is, this might be the first time that this committee comes here.
Atsamba, leswaku ngavaku ro sungula, leswaku eh shangeli tanalu wubakona.
But I want to assure you that it's not the last.
Itzaki lakumtimisale saku aero etelela?
We are here to consult on the, on this bill, the National Field and Fire Forest Amendment.
Eh, wula burisana ina wambi solo wa sa eh timakata mbangu na mi eh ri tswaranova.
In our table, executive mayor, we still have the Bill on Climate Change.
Eh, kabu antalo bza inayarna na wambi si wati makata kuchinchaka mbangu.
So we are still coming to consult on climate change?
Kutanke atabula burisana etimakata tellele sile tanoa ku climate.
So if people speak today the way we expect them to?
Logu banbo blabula entzala le itzakiela kaka kumbenga languterisakurba blabu saksona mutla.
We must make a strong recommendation that the people of Bushbuck Ridge are participating in this process.
Eh, fanele nyikashi puma pumele, bulale saku banbo le Bushbuck Ridge, ba wula wula entzala yo etisek.
So let's go back and consult them on climate change.
Ay teleni yaba wula burisana kame?
Mar logu bangka vula vuli?
If they don't speak?
They jig.
Ah, ah, boi.
Yeah, ah, boi, yeah, I told you I will learn.
I told you I will be speaking.
Okay, so the Department of Forestry and Fisheries?
Nzaolo ya timakata sambangu nasati lampi?
Is an overall, it's a department that is responsible for this bill?
Yo nzaolo le inga langutanana eh eh ku ena wambi silo?
We are not the department.
Heina ay nzao ay inanzaolo?
We are the Portfolio Committee, so we oversee the work of the department.
Yo ba Portfolio Committee, kutanke ilangu te entiro lowu entluakuwa inzaolo?
Now, the department has made these recommendations to us as the Portfolio Committee.
Nzaolo, ndesu puma pumeleleswaka inatani Portfolio Committee?
Because we are the representatives of the people.
Ikuba ina i ina emaila kivano?
We came to consult the people who have elected us to parliament.
Eh, ta ekubula burisana nabano, laba bangka eh shawula leswaku ya eh parliament?
What do they think about the recommendations made by the department on the amendment of this bill?
Shana va eh legeta enis puma pumeleleswanga entiwa nzaolo eh kubula leswaku, shana basutisaku yi eh su puma pumele sesele?
The department can come and consult you.
Nzaolo inge etita burisana nawuina?
So we are consulting Rona as a portfolio committee on be, on their behalf.
Kutanke ina ebulabu sana nawuina ekuu emaila wo?
But they are the overall custodian of this piece of legislation.
Bo, ibo obini banau wambi solo?
They are responsible for all the amendments, to concretize all the loopholes.
Ibo ba, ibo obini ba, ba na wambi solo, na, 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 na nawolo eh kubona noti sisa leswaku ena wambi silo, wati sisiwa?
They have a duty to make sure that this bill is representative, is responsive and is effective.
Ibo ba fanele kubona leswaku ena, ena olu, kumbena wambi silo, wati sisiwa, ulhamula leswana wala wakaso na leswaku wapumeleleswana wala wakaso.
But most importantly, they have a duty to make sure that this bill is relevant.
Kasisankoka ekubona leswaku ena wambi silo, ufa mbi sana na leswata tzaki lakasow?
Eh, we know that Mbumalanga, eh, some parts of Mbumalanga has failed.
As, as timala leswaku, eka eh tindautu ngantale Mbumalanga, kuna eh nova, kumbeslar?
Our people die because of uncontrolled fires in Shakes.
Banwaka enabafile eminzilo le ayanga laule ke emiku queen?
Our animals die because of uncontrollable fires in the field.
Eh, su fosai inasifile eminzilo le ayanga laule ke enove?
So we need to make a law that will regulate these fires.
Kutanke itzaki lakui endana olou nga talau la eminzilo le?
These people who smoke cigarette and they just throw cigarette parts everywhere and make fire on the road.
Banlaba bazaku eh sida zana sati cigarette, kutanwalasela stompy enove?
It must be regulated.
Su faneleswana oleka?
So those are some of the areas that the bills seeks to speak about.
Lwsi, lwezuna wambi silo tzaki lakaku kumba so?
Now, this is not the first amendment to this bill.
Logu ay ku, ay kuwansisako sungula eka na wambi silo?
It is actually the third.
Eh, wabu naru?
Now, but because Rona, we are a different portfolio committee, we are a binding portfolio committee.
Kutanke ina ekuba eh portfolio committee le inga ambanana le titingwani, kutanke itzaki lakulanzele resati makata telle?
We want our people to speak, your voices must be heard.
Etzaki la leswaku ba akatiko ba blabula ay tui ni eh mbulabula wangwe?
We don't want to sit in Cape Town and think that we know the problems of the people of Bushbuck Ridge.
Ay tzaki lakusamale Cape Town kutani enda onge asti basulave kosava akatiko ba Bushbuck Ridge?
It is against that background that we brought parliament to the people.
Ikoko la osanga endale saku itisapa paramente eka ba akatiko?
Now, you people know felled fires well.
Mo evan, ma, ma, ma uti vanzi loale nove, mu uti bakas?
Because felled fires do not only affect... Because felled fires do not only affect the forest like I said.
Ekubanzi loali enove na awo tigilelansen na eh si hara, na sufo le sama ku enove.
They affect the economy.
Si tigilela eh mbangu.
They affect your social being.
Si tigilela eh timakata utomza uwi.
But overall, they affect environmental degradation.
Kutanke eh ekua angarela si tigilela, kumbesika ngayisa timakata eh mbangu, ekua angarela.
Eh, they affect our biodiversity.
Si tigilela si esu milano sa ina.
These fires, they displace our people from where they stay and they have to move to elsewhere because of eh these fires.
Minzilolo i entale saku banwa ka enawa susiwa, kumbebasu kala ba sama ko, ekuba wa fanele va suka, ba sammela kumuwa na kunga, kunga kashe.
That is why we need to regulate these fires.
Kutanke sala ve kale saku i, fami sa kumbegu entale saku, timakale titi samsa.
So we're inviting you to relax.
Kutanke amirambale saku tsusheka.
Engage us.
Eh ayi wula wula si.
Talk to us, help us eh amend this bill.
Ibu la wula si, kutani amsi sana ombisilo.
It must have clear definitions of what is a communal act.
Ufa nele obana eh samsela yo ti ya le i wula wula ku etimakata ma sammela yavana.
Yeah, what is arable land and what is commercial land?
Eh misawale fanele kurimeka, ekui la akufanele ku binzurisua ko.
When we talk about the municipality, what, what, what are we talking about?
Lo ku wula wula emaspa la sha na ekumba yini.
What do we, what are we talking about when we speak about a public entity?
Sha na e wula wula i, lo ku e wula wula estiresiwa swaba aki.
Eh, what are we talking about when we speak about traditional council?
Sha na lo ku e wula wula eti uvo tanzavo ko e wula yini.
So we need to close these loose areas from the act.
Ay, dulamise ni eh ma wangwa wala wa.
So we, we did not want to sit there in the chambers of Parliament, le didi chile yo le dia.
Ay tzaki le kutama le Parlament eh itiketla ko.
Eh, we thought we must come to you so that you help us amend this bill.
Eh twesifanele le saku itagangwe eh le saku ita amsi sa ena ombisilo.
Later during the day, one of the colleagues will explain what happens after we're done here.
Ekue etelele, uwa nuwa ba terekuluori ta samsela le saku, lo ku ifika makumu, sha na kutanenteka yini.
But I must give you our assurance that we are not yet to tick the box.
Ifane mzi le saku, ayi otelanse na kutata mi bo, na kutani itzala tibokuin.
Eh, we are not yet to satisfy eh a process and move.
Ay otzaki la kutata entale saku i, wula le saku itirile process, kutanke ayi fami ni ya mashwin, yatsa, yatsa.
Your views are important to us and they are valuable.
Eh mabonele wangwe, yankoka.
So it's important and valuable is koka once. Inkoka, yeah, mabonele wangwe na ayinkoka. Yankoka, mabonele wangwe na yankoka.
Thank you Chair.
Yeah. Eh, don't worry, by the time we leave here, I will be fine.
Mengebile, lo ku sukala, ntaban samseki.
Eh, nukuma, nukuma fast nyana.
Eh, I speak a little bit faster.
Eh, nakoma.
Oh, I, I, I comprehend very fast.
Yeah, nakoma fast.
I comprehend very fast.
Ankum, ankumeli ku.
Kuole.
Ankumeli kuole.
I'm not a slow learner.
I'm ten thousand better than Honorable Ganjo.
Eh, ndi ka kume, ku anso eh ka ba tonpeki la.
Yeah, if we were to speak eh Thosa, Honorable Ganjo was going to beat all of us here.
Lo ka e wula wula shthosa, amtonpeki Ganja, awata etula yunkuila.
And if we were to speak Africans, obviously Muslima bonos.
Lo ku ya wula wula shpo, nu masutu sisa musa kura kutanomela yin.
Yeah, see eh, mina nda, nda tonja stronga.
I will also learn shsonga.
Eh, ndaba tonzis.
I will teach them shsonga.
Yeah, so I'm fine. Okay, eh, thank you very much, eh, I want to invite eh Honorable Ganjo.
I want to invite, nikombela ku ramba amtonpeki Ganjo.
Eh, to, to outline to us the procedures.
Kuwa wa eh antalela matirele.
Or how, how will we work today?
Kurisha na etatele saku i, eh ka sugura namut.
Eh, please don't expect her to speak eh shsonga or eh spulan.
Minga la ute le saku, wula wula shsonga kumbesipulan.
Or, or shswat.
Kumbesh shswat.
No, 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 she, she can only speak Thosa Shem.
Ango, wula wula shthosa nse.
Eh, ma mGanja.
Engasi Chair.
Thank you Chairperson.
Mani bulisa wakona ku, basali basi Bushback Ridge.
Ngani bingerela futs, basali basi Bushback Ridge.
Ni ba alengale Sunday.
You are so beautiful on this Sunday.
I am going to explain to you the process that we are going to follow for oral submissions.
Ngidau khasake nyalo, ingu bolestau hamba ngayo, jongo bastau le sati thulo, letendua ngemlong.
We are going to request all those who wish to make oral submission, to do that by show of hands.
Stautela bongela, wula ba funa, le sate thulo tabo, ba kuluma, ba paramsetanla.
We will therefore identify ten people.
Stabe se si kobola banfla ban ten.
Uh, we will start from this side, on my left hand side.
Stautala ngala esnelemi.
After identifying that that ten, we will request them to occupy these middle seats.
Eh, venku basesba kobolilela, ba tawbiya ba tohlala la, emkatsi ni kunati tito lo eh letilshum.
When a member occupies the podium.
Oma, umundu asu oma, ata oma la, ato kuluma.
We will request you to introduce yourself.
Stautela kututati se.
And the area where you're coming from.
Na lenza olobuya guyo, kutubuya api.
And after that, you indicate whether you support the bill or not.
Emfagoa logo, uyashakuti, uyasekela, nama awusekeli, lomtsatos vivinyo le s kulmangan.
We have a time limitation, a member is allocated five minutes to talk.
Sikaliwe, geskatsi se tukulu, menasau figilela, imizuzu, milta nukpe.
But if you feel that your submissions were not enough, you can also do that by a written submission. Eh, we have a lady here with us, our secretary of the committee, Miss Kileka Matubela. She will be able to assist you with the forms and also take you through whether, how to, to, to fill in the forms.
Na ngabe, uva ngati, akuge neli, loglo kulumile, ugasapala futs pansi, besese inamage Matubela la, mchileka lama, ubesu sonse la ku yeke, upalisaloklo kabanga kuti, useli ngaleskatsi, usola ngale mizuzlestang.
And also those who may not have a chance to be, to be amongst the ten or those who will be speaking, you can also do so by a written submission.
Na labo la banegi, babenalulituba, legukulumala, banga palapasi, te thulo tabo, labanato, ba letse la pagumage Matubela.
Before I sit down Chair, I just have a, a small plea, I would also request women to participate.
Ngambi wokting khalipas, nes telo, lapales kuluka kulu, ntelagut bomagi, bafat, kuluman.
Please, because in these areas that we were coming from, you know, Oma, Abafunu participate, oh, maybe they feel scared, but please, Bomama, you are the most affected ones, espanding Oma, thank you very much.
Bomagi, nginlenzinse keka kulula, letenza olisku ya ku, bomage ngatsbasaha ba kulum, kuleka nkomage kulman.
Thank you very much Honorable Ganjo.
Eh ba nga kulu, magi Ganja?
See, magi Ganjo, angani bze langur, mina niranza, niranza bansaad.
Ah, ngirani cheli ke mina, kutiba fati ngaba zansa.
Eh, niranza? Niranza baba fa, baba sad, yeah, angani bze langur, mina niranza baba sad.
Aga ngani cheli, kuti mne ngaba zansa bafat.
So lo ku bangka, lo ku bangka wula wuli, an, 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 an shitokaal, an sad.
Na banga kulum, bafat, angfaga lila.
An, an, anitagi, lo ku bangka wula wuli.
Cha wuli bafat na banga kulumi.
Eh, anbaranzi literal.
Ay kuti ngaba zansa anshe.
I, I, I like it when women speak.
Ngaba zansa ngaleskatsi ba kuluma.
Because women are the most affected by some of these felled fires we're talking about.
Ngobe, bomage ngibo, labatsinseka ko ka kulu, ngale tenza batemli.
Gone are the days where men are the only ones who take care of cattle.
Lamala ngasewen lhuula la, kuti, tawangematwata pe la, labuke infuyo, emalewin.
Na bomama kumeli ba fu yemaj.
Bomage fanele ba funse ya.
So these felled fires affect you too?
Na, nigekwensin sa logo, kuali mililo ya.
How do you think, how do you think we can amend this bill to regulate eh these fires?
Ni kabanga kuti lomtsatos vivinyo lo, ugasisi danjan, kutu tribelo, kutu glumi setenza ba, dalimililo, le, le malasim.
Si, si, si veni?
Do you understand?
Si veni? Right. Gzakela ge, ngale, uten ngale ku left, ngale ku left.
Siptala ngala, ngasala sesngele.
By sign of hands.
Kumbisan ngeparamsetanla.
And then I will point at you.
Na seni ku kobola ke we enala po.
Then you will come to this eh chairs in the middle.
Ta obuya utela, letitilo letsemkatsi ni.
You'll be given an opportunity to address us through this mic.
Uta obe se unigualituba, lo kuti ukulume natsi, kulumpopolo.
Two important things, your name, eh maybe where you come from, and whether you support the bill or not.
Lo ku ba lega ka kulu, umbanuena, likama nesbongo, obuya api, uyavuma, uyasekela, lomtsatos vivinyo, nama awusekeli.
Nikumbela moboko. Yeah, eh Tata, you, eh mapili. Eh, Tata, you'll be the first. Eh, Mama, you'll be the second. Eh, Mama, you'll be the third. Mama? Isama, yeah, then Mama. Mama ki o, likatuko, Mama ekoneni, ngetuwe kri. Yes, eh, ngia kbona Baba Mario Yangazmos, ilah. Ngia kbona Baba, eh Baba, la etu, yeah, yebo. Baba, the back with the white hat, weina ba. Which guy? Yebo wa. Are they, are they full? Two more, okay, two more from the left.
Enang magenala.
There's a hand.
Enang magenala.
Na, that hand there, weina ba, weina, yes, eh nawe ma. Yeah, clearly. Okay, eh, di, is it going? All right, eh Baba, you, you, you can take the mic. Yes, Baba.
Good day, good eh morning, eh thank you Program Director, eh for the opportunity that we can able to participate in this eh felled fire.
San, sanbona ninonke, ngianusela ekse ni, se abu nga kulu, kuti sibenele ituba, letau kuluma ngale tenza batemililo ya semalatim.
Yes, eh, eh, I'm standing here in the support of eh the program that has come to Bushback Ridge, as our name of the area says it all, that is eh Bushback Ridge.
Ngiesegela, lulhelo lenitena lulapha, eh Bushback Ridge, lilkamalia tisho lo kuti, usemalatimila, Bushback Ridge.
Yes, eh furthermore, eh Bushback Ridge is a place where there's eh bush, eh bush, so much eh forest, so much trees, so much flowers.
Le enzahoge, enzahoge ya se Bushback Ridge, hinzo, lene malatzi, lene titlala, netitroto ro nje, donge temalatzi dikonala.
Yes, see, though it is, it is so beautiful in fact.
Ke payo na lenzo, hinlega kulu.
Eh, in the support of eh the felled fire eh la eh Bushback Ridge eh we, 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 we really appreciate le, le program niza na yo.
Na sisegela, lulhelo lenitena lula, loa lomtsatos vivinyo, lo tribelo ago, si ya kuchabela lo ku ka kulu kuti, nisendelego.
Eh, before I put eh the categories of eh why are we supporting the program, I will introduce myself.
Ngambi wokting bege goonge, logo, lengdabe ngsho etiguago, kuti ngisegelani, lomtsatos vivinyo, asentisho mina kuti ngibana.
My name, it is eh Raytin Ngomezulu.
Lilkamalam, ngincreting Ngomezulu.
Yeah, Raytin.
Raytin, oh, Raytin Ngomezulu.
I'm from eh the small urban area called Durslop, Ward Eight.
Ngibuya lapagalel todojana, le tewa ito, Durslop, eh Ward Eight.
Eh, in eh, in eh support of eh the program eh will be happy eh because eh when you look at the area.
Na sisegela lulhelo, si ya chabula nasibuga, lenza olisguyo.
Ama starting fire eh at all costs, you have mentioned some of the things, Program Director.
Eh, sikhalo nemtuku lulhelo, sa utibalile letinyeti info, letitala le mililo.
In, in, in regard of the fire protection that we have as a Bushback Ridge municipality.
Kulo ku figelwa, we, we mvelo, nemil, nganza batemililo, sinestlapha eh Bushback Ridge.
Eh, besizo chabula will be happy if eh all those eh organization as a fire eh department to go, as you have said, ama initiating schools.
Si nga chabula ka kulu kuti donge letinlanganu, letisegela, letenza batemililo, tibe, letenza olapoktaofun sisa kon.
And also we, we have companies that are around Bushback Ridge, those who work in those forests.
Si, netingamba ni ge futleklapa eh Bushback Ridge, letisabenda kora le malatim.
Eh, those companies as well, na bo, they need or in an expectations of the protection as a fire department.
Na bo, ngelitigo le temililo, balinzele, kuti, kufigeleke, goonge, lo le malatim.
Yes, in, in, in some of the things, fires start by eh thunderstorms around Bushback Ridge.
Leminya imililo, italoa kutu manche kuelu, lapha eh Bushback Ridge.
As in a traditional councils that we have around Bushback Ridge, also the Department of Fire Protection can engage with them as a support.
Si nga kuluma futs ne baholi, benzabugo, nalaba laba, netinlanganu, teguluwa nemililo, si nga kuluma na bo basegela.
Yes, eh, and also we, we appreciate to increase or put more weight, I'll be eh putting more weight, so I'll appreciate and support eh this program as a Parliament, as eh Bushback Ridge municipality, as eh all the stakeholders that are in the eh event today.
Siyabona futu se akohala lisela lukutu bekon na ipalamentela, ito okulumanati ngalenzaba, nabobongela bapanzaga nyeka ago, kulenzaba etemililo, bayachabula kulu kutu nibela.
In a conclusion, I will say, don't only do this to us as, as Bushback Ridge, you can also increase or be wide in South Africa to protect the fire.
Le wektrina lenngaru shosengvala ukuzi, ninga we ndigitisotwa logo, lo, lo ukuzi nitela eh Bushback Ridge, hambana lenningzim Africa yonge nendanjana.
Thank you.
Ya bonga.
Ngiyan bingelela nonke.
Greetings to you all.
Ngibongalitigo. Lelilisi vaga shele namulha, kutu lidosi kulumisa ngetinsaba temmililo.
I'm thanking the department for coming here to talk to us about felled fires.
Eh, sia amge la, siyamphaga tuwe Bushback Ridge, ukuzi, logo vini kulumanga ago ngetinsaba temmililo, ngolugu kwechela la eh Bushback Ridge, jongova i insaho lese tuten le mashatz.
We accept you coming here to talk about felled fires. We are really in this area, close to the bushes and the forests.
Eh ngalo go sitanshagusho gukutu, kunavakona tinhlalo lapabando batofunzi swakona, igakulugati lavabasheti ekta leni, lavabake ekta leni nalamashatz.
We would like to have a program where people will be taught about felled fires, especially those people who live close to the bushes and the forests.
Eh logo nyefuti besingathanza gukutu, kubenala lavabasebenda, ekta leni kuala makaya, kutu le mililo oma ikamunga, kubenala lavabato baba bakati, le baba nagutinai le mililo.
We would also like that there are people who work around, they're working for fire people, so that they can help when the fires start.
Eh gonke logo kukulumenge ago sia gwa mge, ngithanza guusho gukutu sia bonga, eh, simele guusho gukutu, le lhihelo siyaltanza, sia lamge la gukutu alibe konna, jongova seni, senil kazile, sitanza gukutu le lhihelo libe konna, lituvege le pambili, lina kali elana lituvege na kuletenyetinsaho.
We would like to request that this program be here. We like the program, we love it, we want people to be taught the program must continue.
Senitwina ingolomo yami, eh, ngimi inki Tube, lolala konala eh Bushback Ridge, lo itsanza ago eh Bushback Ridge, lo fisago gukutu sitinshalo letinsetingayende.
In conclusion, I am Ivy Tube, who stays here in, inki, inki Tube, who stays here in Bushback Ridge, who likes that programs like this be here in Bushback Ridge, because I love Bushback Ridge so much.
Ya bonga.
Thank you.
Kalibitso, let's say name, ke felle zaga rukidula kai. O bitomi kalibitso say name, lo rukidula kai, thank you. Nkathom?
Yes, Nkathom.
Kialidume disa bohle baduli karufela dituluka rufapa fapana kalibitso la Jesu Christe mpolushuaruna.
I greet you all in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord.
Oh, I am Mopilo Rasfatrosalu na, ki Thelma Getroot Sibia, udula monamolifasi la Bushback Ridge.
I am Thelma Getroot Sibiu Sibia, I live here in Bushback Ridge.
Ki to akilikuwa Duarslope Hot Eight, what eight?
I am from Duarslope Award Eight.
Kiallebu ga baduli, bagulu baka, bagutuwa parlamente, helitile kantlaye kulu, yonaya kutibela mulo.
I am very much grateful by the visit of our parliamentarians, people from parliament, on this issue of the prevention of felled fires.
Eh girata kulebu ga kulu kubani ki, silo selerena baduli renalisona.
I am very much grateful because this is definitely one of the biggest problems that we as residents experience in the area.
Kubani mo Bushback Ridge rinali du ruu zedi ngata, konaviyalo hadu honiguri, duhweje dijoga buu uzi, lidinjlotza runa hemi mo ya ita, harisa na chirilezo, yalika kubali tlile litloru tusarile buka.
Because most of us in Bushback Ridge, we've got lots and lots of livestock. So when there are times where there is fires, our houses are also in danger. But what I can say, we are very much grateful and appreciate your visit.
Eh kubani lidirua taruna dia hua, hadina dijova, tuva felela kimu bereko, baba we ba bereka udisa tona du home.
Because our livestock die in this, in the process. And when the livestock is dead, those head boys and head men, then they lose their jobs. So then that brings about poverty.
Eh mo Bushback Ridge rinali du budi, rinali du ngu, rinali du home, kudilo tetaru, tere na lizonaba, tuva du ruilo, baba we ba rekisa, ba pila kachaletaye.
Here in Bushback Ridge, we've got cows, we've got goats, we've got sheep, and that is the livelihood of some of these people because of, because of the fact that they sell these, what you call animals, and get money for living out of that.
Jalo, jalo remulo utuka, diloteka ufe la di swa du home hadina dijoo, tona te kidibulete hadutole dijoo, eh baba du ruile, ngba thoma go sa humani chelete, kubani ba dibulaya, ra konna rekanama, oma lumewa edisa, baba role, la cheleto ya pidisa mutuwa bo.
But now, the, the, the problem is, when these fires have occurred, when the land is burned, the, the livestock do not have grazing lands, they've got nothing to eat. So as a result, they will, they will definitely start dying, begin to die. Some of them are being killed and, and the meat is being sold in that process.
Jalo riylebu ga, helilela ditltswe nyaguri, lidlemona ge ngiaruna, luruna riri, riemali luna, ritochona kuletega, ritochona kutega nalidi councila taruna.
We are very much grateful that you have visited us here. And then what, what I can say is that we support you, and then we also, we will also support our councilors.
Eh letse pisaguri, karufela speto selito sijia, ritoyo emali luna, ibile ritochona goridire, selito risidire goritibela onamulo.
We are definitely going to support you, and we are going to take whatever instruction that you can give us, anything that concerns the, the, the prevention of these world, these felled fires.
Eh kitlata huli lebu ga, selisidire lenmo liska sidiramofela, lituseng lidin, lidinakaze diwe, kilebu ga garu.
I want to thank you all and for, for, for your visit. And then I want to say, this visit must not be in Bushback Ridge only, but it must be in all other provinces, I thank you.
Thank you, Sister Getroot. We are actually visiting all the provinces, Sister Getroot. We've started at Free State, ne, Anari, then also Northern Cape, where here in Pumalanga. Tomorrow, we're going to KZN, and after that, Hautek, Limombo, etc. So we are going to visit all the provinces, you must just relax on that, thank you, Kumbama.
Kranzako pushela, ba akatiko inkwabo ba Bushback Ridge.
Greetings to all Bushback Ridge residents.
Pushela burangeli inkwabje kuamba na hambana.
All the leadership.
Luwe abla blaka le masweni eriske selinda wa loa atamakala Bushback Ridge.
The one speaking, yes, Risky Selinda, a resident of Bushback Ridge.
Asukaka eh Ward Five.
From Ward Five?
Luwe asungulaka eku kensa parlamente yaina.
Like to thank first our parliament.
Kuba itile ekahina eh Bushback Ridge.
For coming to us, the people of Bushback Ridge.
Kuba itabla blana hinai makaya kusaisa, psa menzilo.
To speak about, to speak about, about fire and protecting ourselves against fires.
Itua ititua herle hensango opfu, kumbena kumbenakutunzusiana le shaku, ifanele wusibersa kuyunenzilo.
We feel so honored that you came here also to enlighten us about how can we prevent these felled fires.
Loko kuremina imandisungula ekundaswe amke la ngingasezende bulanchu.
Before I could go further, let me just say, I accept and support this.
Ele shaku lokonjitunzuka kama lembenza, kukunamashaka yahina lawa mangadaya nzilo.
Way back, I remember some of relatives lost their lives due to felled fires.
Shikanwe kanwe nakambela Bushback Ridge ibanbandabuko.
And Bushback Ridge were people of tradition.
Loko noba yipsa ilasekeruwa imisinya.
When we have felled fires, our trees are vanished.
Kamka ringwayana misinya yale, ayasukoti kutela isuka matuka.
Sometimes those trees, they don't grow leaves again.
Misinya le yipsa kenga asukoti kusuka matuka, ile iha nyaka yona.
Some of those trees will lose their leaves forever, we live through those trees.
Nashe harso nganyana, lesukomeka kalanobe, nisingarusuiki, salaseka.
Some of the, of the enemas which are in the forest, which are there, sometimes they go lost.
Banava hinabatalasekeruwa intumbuluku ekupange etlila asukonile, kusafasahela.
So some of the children will not know the importance of nature, because those things will vanish.
So yoma ka yuku, hayisapota, he itimbilita hinai inkwatu.
That's why we support this with all our hearts.
Inkoo.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Goktala anginibingelele, ngibingelela vuholu vetu, va patiwami, va se parlamente, ngpinze ngibingelele baholi wami la ngxala na vokonala eh Bushback Ridge, na woho ongu mundilo akonala kulethule ngitsingya nibingelela nonke.
I start by greeting the leadership from parliament, the leadership from Bushback Ridge, I greet you all.
Eh ngithanza gulubonga delihelo lenishtamge lenalu namulha, milango gusho wami ngishonjalo ngitsingyalisapota, ngpinze ngitsipambili ngalo, alitubege njaalo.
Thank you very much for the program that you have come with today. I thank you and I support the program.
Nkoso kutisho likama lamngu trafenamangana.
I am trafenamangana.
Eh ngxala konale Bushback Ridge ku Ward Thirty-Five.
I stay at Ward Thirty-Five here in Bushback Ridge.
So insaba yemililo isi limata kaku lu, ezee Bushback Ridge ngoba sithala emashlatsin.
The felled fires affect us big time, because we stay close to the bushes and the forest here in Bushback Ridge.
Seni akabanga kutu jongova serukalilo le lhihelo natisulitoliile, kutu sisita kutu le mililo le, inga satube egine guwonatinsaho utetu.
I hope these fires will not continue to destroy our places, because you have come with a very great program.
Ngoba ngiyakabanga le mililo kakulu ibanguane ukuzi bando bagiti, abanalo loa ti kakulu, ngenzaba yetitlala nejani kutu kubalile kufiga kubupi.
Our people do not know the importance of the trees and grass, that is why they do not take care about the fires.
Seni akabanga kutu me e ngabanee timbizola ema village, ukuzi sevafunzi sebando bagiti, ngenzaba ye kubaluleka kuititlala nejani, ngiyakabanga kutu na kungasita kakulu kula bando anabeit.
I think the embisos that can be called in our communities, in our villages, so that our young people also can learn about the importance of trees and the grass.
Ngoba ngiyakabanga kutu mabapema delikuwa, umabalaxastou pipansi, abawadi kutu stotala mona galumkulu, sosengaba funzi sangago, ngiyakabanga kutu kungasitita.
They don't know that when they smoke and throw the piece of cigarette on the floor, that will create lots of fires.
Eh siyaliima la insaho niya se bushisne massime la sidilime la wone, la massime eh tasi kawa biyela ngabotarata, tolo kutu sibie ngetitlala nyana, kutu tinngomotinangi nitisile.
We, we have fields, we plow, and we have fenced our, our fields with trees. And when felled fires come, our, the trees are destroyed and our fields are destroyed.
So uyasilimata kakulu ngalo wenzela, ngalibonga liparlamente umalifigi le kiti sitokulumanga yule insaho, siyalisapota kakulu, lenzaba ayepambili, sitelanato le timbizoli sisite liparlamente, kutu tibe konna kula ma community, yebo.
Thank you for parliament for coming here, we ask that you bring the embisos to us, this is very important, the felled fires affect us a lot. Thank you.
Tobe la, kudimenixalukutla kamka, lelenkamo, kamka galona.
I greet you all.
Klinakia letechalukutla lelenkamo kutuwa parlamente.
I support the delegation from parliament and the idea.
Eh na kalibitso ke Godfrey Manamela, Maraleska Jauri.
I am a Godfrey Manamela.
Kimududu amo Bushback Ridge, Ward Ninety.
The resident of Bushback Ridge, Ward Ninety.
Ntungue girata, koybalela mo, kisisimuselo ngene, asentavishinyana kanyane.
I'm going to say something about, something that is worrying me, something that I'm not happy with.
We have our radio, community radios, and I, kibwana kiba, bajule jalane, logorleba, logorabala juku fita.
We've got our community radios, they are the people who are supposed to be supporting this program, but unfortunately, it seems they are not here.
Ya gorri, mulajolo nukufunu fita batung, sesilinkamo bailo baba juku fita, bako nutileja the radio stations.
So that those who are not here at the moment would get whatever is being discussed here over the airwaves on the radio.
Because kilemo goro motomole muwe obutloka, monifasi.
Because I'm aware of the fact that each and every person is, is, is important. Because I'm aware of the fact that each and every person is important on earth. One thing I want to bring to everybody's attention is that the Bushback Ridge area is very much rich in agriculture. Because many fruit trees grow in the area successfully, like your avocado, your mangoes, your lychees. They grow easily and nicely in the fertile soil of Bushback Ridge. I want to appeal to everybody that we must definitely see to it that we work hard on this agriculture sector because the malls that are around, especially the shopping malls, we are the ones who are supposed to supply them with the fruit and veggies. Because right now, as you go into the shops, you are told that like the potatoes is from a certain province. These onions or whatever is from another province. But we are sitting on a fertile soil that can also easily produce those products on our own soil. I want to suggest that we must pass the information, that is those who are here and even those who are not here, to encourage each and everyone to have a little garden of fruit and veg in their backyards. Because our country is in trouble right now. You can see everything is very much expensive and we can see that most of the things we can just develop for ourselves because of the fact that God helps those who help themselves. Another thing is, when we want to burn in the dumping areas, we must burn in controlled places, not just everywhere. Because we hear many stories of things that happen, especially where you find that. Leave cigarette butts have been left in the open and people have died in the sheds and so on. That is definitely very, very, very much a bad to, something bad news to hear. I just want us to, I just want to encourage that you please listen to our plea, listen to our problems, even our executive mayor, listen to us, the problems that we've got in the area. Thank you very much and I'm very much grateful of your visit.
Greetings, parliament. I'm Mr. Stoller from Cottondale, Akonuk. Ward twenty. Ward twenty. Want to support this bill? Also to thank parliament. To involve us as residents? So that we work together towards protecting our environment? Bushback Ridge is fertile and very beautiful. We realize that as residents, we can do something, but we can't do it alone without you as parliament. Felled fires are very destructive things, especially in our environment. So we ask the government to come closer to us so that we talk then so that we find solution towards these things. So environment need to be clean, barricaded and people who guard so that it is not destroyed. I thank you. And Kesa.
Thank you, program director. Also the members from the legislature. From national, also the provincial. I also want to thank the honorable executive mayor. Let me say all protocol observed. My name is Rexen Cylinder. I'm the chief fire officer of the whole Bushback Ridge municipality. Let me say I support the amendment of the bill. Reason for saying that is that there was some aspect in the act. It was not capturing some of the municipality. Therefore, some of the landowners were not also captured in this area. So I really support, I'm here to support it. We will engage and interact with you in this act as the session still continues. I thank you.
I want to thank the program director, Mr. Mudise. We thank the parliament for visiting us in Bushback Ridge. And thank the mayor and the entire executive. I'm from, I'm from.
Setlar Traditional Council.
Traditional Council in Akonuk. I support the bill of fire. I want to bring submission to parliament. I'm appealing to you to protect our forests. I'm appealing that there should be securities in our forests. So that the fire can be controlled. People who get into the forest must be traditional healers. The people who are working in the forest. Even those who are doing traditional schools. They must get permits to get into those areas. To avoid fire. Another thing is that there should be branches of firefighters. Because there are times when we are looking for firefighters, but unfortunately, we don't get them. I'm very much grateful for parliament's presence here. I support the bill. Let it be an act. I thank you. I'm going to say. Mingisirani wants to thank and greet parliament. And greet the speaker. And house at large. Mingisirani thanks the visit by parliamentarians in our area. I support this bill of parliament. I support because of, in the following reasons. We are gradually losing part of our nature. When there is felled fire. In that area, we've got. Alright. Yes. As mothers, we go there, we get the mashala, we crush them and feed our children. We feed them with the mawawa. Alright. We crush them and feed our children. So when there is felled fire, that wildfire burns everything and kills them. As mothers, then we begin to suffer because we're feeding the children with those things. As mabulaana, when it rains, there are some certain trees that have dicholo. So that we can also record again. Please, Kukupari, tell us the voice, Hanyan. That what, what, what the mawawa is a wild fruit? Yes, 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 yes. There are some other trees that inside them, there is, there are this dicholo. We take those dicholo, then we feed our children, then we feed the children with. When felled fire burns, then it burns everything, so as mothers, we struggle. As mothers, from time to time, we go to the rivers and cut off the shark. Right now, it's the time of initiation. So when they get from initiation school, those mashamu are needed, but unfortunately, we don't have them. The felled fires destroy almost everything.
I thought I was taking the cup until you started speaking. I'm taking the cup. Yeah, he, 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 he. He, he, interpreter, it's not me who said it.
This is not said by me, is the interpreter, because trying to rectify that thing of mawawa.
Yeah, he's continuing, even this one, it's not me. Okay, let's go to the right. Let's, let's take hands from on the right. Okay, let's go to the right, eh, let's, let's take hands from, on the right. N'da'de ki'au'ona, me'ki'au'ona, me. Li'ue na'me. Eh, n'da'de, we na'dula ki'ata'ke, we na'dula pin. Ki'ada'me. Ki'ada'me pin, ki'abalanza jenda mo. Ki yo'me, me, taya, eh, taya ke'anta'de, re'balanza jenda, ki'anta'de, li'se'le va'la fifty fifty. Tila'ha fifty fifty no. Eh, ki'ada'me pin, me. Ona'me, o'kaufi n'da'de tu'le. N'da'de, tu'la n'da'de, n'da'de tu'le. N'da'de tu'le. N'da'de komra'oh. Okay, okay, let me check if there's a chair. Okay, re'la, we, we'll come back, re'la, re'la hutu, me'ku'boni, me'waristripe. I, I will come back, ne, ki'uboni, li'ue na n'da'de ku'boni, it's just that the chairs are full here.
N'tabuya kanwe, imbonile, zena, eh, ndau itte'ele.
N'dau itte'ele, n'tabuya kanwe.
The place is full, I will come back to you.
Yeah, nu'gu'bu zelili kor, lo'ko'nu'famba la, n'tafamba ndirisho.
I told you, when I leave here, I will be fine.
Yeah, I'll be clear. Eh, my chief? N'da'de, n'ta'de, ya'processi akalimiu'ao. N'da'de, n'da'do'ongala. You're going to delay my process with that process of yours?
Ma, my fairies are, ma famisela'ala ya'ongwe.
Satogal.
Am I audible?
Eh...
You're clear.
Luanga tabula'ula, se'si, ijuel m'tetwa.
The one, eh, who's going to speak is Juwel M'tetwa?
Eh, lu'e'au maka, ka'ward twenty, eh, twenty-eight.
From ward twenty-eight?
Lei'ye'enduaka, hi'maprasila malanzelaka.
Comprising of the following forms.
Eh, yinka Santhia.
Which is Santhia?
Yinka Angin Court.
Angin Court.
Yinka Danfries.
Danfries.
Na MP Stream.
And MP Stream.
Meru'endi'ula'ula kandu'uma MP Stream.
Speaking, I'm from MP Stream.
N'dame puxela, inku'e ni'ku'anga re'ela.
Greetings to all of you, protocol observed.
Eh, nditn'kana ma'ke'nsis.
Let me go straight to the issues.
Eh, lo'ko'ndi'usitwa kase, kare'ula'ula la.
When I listen attentively as we are presenting here.
E'ula'ula, eku'amenda.
We are, eh, we are talking about amending.
Le'sisanga kuchinchana ulou'unga kokosis.
Which means we are going to change something from the existing law.
Eh, me, andi tabula'le'si, kap'ulo'le'si.
I would like to say the following.
Eh, andi tabula'ula kunfumo, au engeteli maranja.
The government must add up to the number of rangers.
Wa'tela ba'ba traina kutimanzilo.
And also be trained to fight felled fires.
Eh, ndit'elandi'ula'le'sa ku'government, ai ve'ki nau, kava'za'eva folela va'za'aka varitimoveni.
In addition, the government must put a law for smokers who smoke from within their cars.
Ekui, eku'ola ba'endla'aka le'sa kunzilo, u'kutsatinoha, eku'lo'ko, va'eta ku'za'armoveni, o'chukumeta, ande kakuveni, lo'ko'bo, bo'vekana'oka'ku, ak'aza'eli itimoveni, n'zilo uta'ye'sha'onge'eta.
They cause this because as they smoke from the car, they just open the window, throw out the butt. But if there is a law which prohibits that, then things will be fine.
Eh, ndit'elandi'ula'ula ku, ekuiya hi'manispari iti.
Let me add that according to the municipality.
Municipality, ai fanele'ivanawanu, laba ba'anga koku ya'hemati ward, inkuatu.
The municipalities should have brigades in different wards.
Laba ba'anga takotaku, va'imala kutimanzilo, ambilo'ko'ba ma'volunteer.
Those ones can also be volunteered, but their responsibility will be to quell the fires.
Ekufamba kankar, lo'ko'government, itasoba na'kusatira, itaba absorb, bitaba te.
As time goes on, the government can assess and then absorb them.
Inkou mu.
Thank you.
Absheni.
Greetings.
Eh, ndisungla'ku'ula'ula, n'la'kusapota eh program, lei namunkla yanga'ko olanzin.
My initial speech will be to support the program that you are dealing with here.
Na'kutitivisa, vito, ni Rose Maponda.
And to introduce myself as Rose Makubela.
Andi ta', lei ward three.
From ward three.
Em'ku'li, aska, councila'unkuna, emi mssisi.
From m'ku'li, under councila'unkuna.
Emi mssisi. Eh, n'la'kusapota eh program, lei ngako'ona monkla, lei ngakola shikarka'ina, na'kupuxela, inku'abula ba'anga tsama, emashenka'ina, tilidarda'ina, eku'ambana'ambana kasutulushang'ina, n'ame puxela, vitora'ma timbara'yesu, amen.
I would like to support the program that you have presented and also to greet all in front of us, protocol observed.
N'la'kusapota program, lei ku'ya ipuna, mo'speciali, eh, ba'basati, ndi iso, ya'anyay, kusapota, ivanawanu'ina, ish'啦啦啦啦, na'nakurima.
Especially to say that the program helps us as women, so I would like to support it, it helps us. Because as women, we live our daily lives by planting.
So, ne'shinda'ka kusipula'ula angofungofu, bifon ya'emashweni, iti makata'ku, lo'ko' e'ula'ula, e'burimi kumbi, e'ula'ula, ndau le'itumake, lo'ko' kuruku'una ndau le'irimela kakayo, inati fire guide, leti fanele'ke, iti basisa kunzilo, ngafikele'ili lan, lanzinla'irimela kakou.
As I speak, if we have a place that we are planting or using, or a little small patch of land, we must have fire gas so that we can prevent the fire from escaping to other areas.
Na'kujeketela angofla'aku, lo'ko' barka'ri ba'nbaza, ba'famba balasa, endilin no'makanjan, le'shien'la'ka ku ekonomiya eh, ifamba ya'wa endilin.
Stressing that to those who are smokers, they throw away cigarette butts which causes fire, which disturbs the economic smooth running.
Antaku, tani ekui, oma'eti village, n'daku'ambana'ambana, tani eku'Parliamenti hi'va'ka cherile'ina monkla.
As we are coming from different villages and places, and the fact that Parliament has visited us today.
An'la'kubulasoku ma'ongula, omanga'ei, le'likai, nan'zena'la ba'anga apo'indiwa kutafika kale'insau.
I would like to say that do not only finish your program with us here, who have been nominated to come here.
Na'ina'anga, ta'kutapastipeta, ifanele'ema'ongula, ya'ema'onzisa, le'ema, emakaya, itsa'makaku, ema village.
Even us who are participants must be able to escalate the information back in our villages.
Katimiti, nu'ku'ambana'ambana la, ku'baka'ku ba'na'community ko'ona, ifanele'ya ba'tuzusha, iti makatanzilo, kunzilo, au mana'mana'shi, ulala kunwana kunwana.
We must also help in different platforms where we are to say that fires should be stopped wherever it happens.
So, ilaku'kiasa enkaro lo, ni'bulashoku iken'sili, ekufiken kanwe i'jonzashakta'la inkou.
I would like to say that we are happy that you are here and to thank you.
Good morning.
Ke'le, dumidi'chan?
My name is Tabiso Mohale.
Eh, ki na, Tabiso Mohale?
I am from the government program, which is called Working on Fire.
Ki twa, le'nan'ongula mu'xula'u vi twa, o'suma'ka mullo.
It is under the Department of Forests, Fisheries and the Environment.
Ika'fasera, kor, ya, kawo di'kua, de'tla'bi, lite'ku'lo'ku.
Eh, I want us to, I'm actually standing here to rectify something.
Ki emi'chimoku ta'ole'ukisasi lo'se'si we?
I have observed while I am sitting down.
Ki le'mukela'ore, ki du'chimula fasimula?
That the understanding of the NVFFA is not understood by the community.
Ore'se'chava, asukuisishi NVVA.
The Act One, Act One oh one of nineteen ninety-eight is not familiar to the people that are sitting down here.
Mulao, one oh one oh nineteen ninety-eight, ba'twabanti wa'baluchimu'ka, ba'u'kuisishi.
I am, I've got a plea to make.
Ki na'lei, ekupela'eki nyanga'we iti ya?
That at least if the government can provide a program.
Ore'ke'mu'xu, o'gacha'ale'chale nan'oe?
To educate the public.
Ho, 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 ho'pa'fusha'se'chava.
About this act.
Mavapili mulao'oh.
And so that the contribution that you're expecting from the communities can be affected.
Ore, iti twa'ya twa'ya, t'elini nyanga'usichabing, iti kona'kupeta'aka twa.
Eh, another thing that I need to clarify, I need to get clarity on.
Tabengwe'eki nyanga'unku'kucha'ki kuisishi ya'yo'na'shi.
On the, on the bill itself.
Mavapili mulao'kaka'ani.
It's that there is not clarity on the matter, on the matter of the landowners that will not be complying to the, to the act itself.
Ga'una mo'utalo'sa'ongore, ki magatwa'fi'aka chi'elu'au, we'ngbana, ga'ba'u basa'chale, ba'u basa'lateli, omula'oh.
Because we have landowners that are not complying to this piece, piece of legislation.
Ga'ure, rinale'ba'ingbadina, ga'ba'ilo'ongore, ga'ba'lateli, melau'ye.
And another thing that I need to understand on this bill.
Tabengwe'eki nyanga'u iku'sisha'omula'okaka'ani'oh.
Is that what penalty is gonna be, is gonna be requested from the ones that are breaking the, the law itself regarding the, regarding the bill and, and the act.
Ke'koto i'i fi, ei'tlu'ku'fi'wa ba'twabu, e'va'tokomulo'ka'ou, ta'va'ya'mula'okaka'ani'oh.
I am reading here because you say, eh, you are saying the, the, the bill itself is to amend the National Field and Forest Act of nineteen ninety-eight?
Ki balamo, kawo'leri, mulao'kaka'ani'oh, u'tishoka'oka'oka fatusha, mulao'oh, oh, oh, one nineteen ninety-eight?
So as to amend and insert certain definitions.
Ore, o'te'hu' inchiu'eloko lukishua, lo'ko'se'ni'oh, di, di, di talosu, t'eligu'we?
To provide for the facilitation of the information of the Fire Protection Association.
Ore, o'te'ho'ho'lo'kupeta'aka twa, lo'ko' no'lo'facha, ta'va'ya tirishu, ya'chile twa'me'lo.
By municipalities and traditional councils.
Ga'bu mas'pala, le, va'eta'pilabasi t'oh.
To compel the municipalities.
Ro'rapela'ja'bu mas'pala.
Self-owned enterprises.
Le, di'ku'evu, t'oh di'wa'ikemi t'oh.
Public entities.
Le di, to'ongati'igua'cha, cha'ta'oh.
And so forth, and so forth.
Bi'ale, bi'ale, bi'ale.
But there is no clarity on what penalties is gonna be taken if those that are not in, in, following the legislature is gonna be taken.
Fe'ala, ga'una, mo'ukulela'oka'koto, ye'ou ito'hu'usimishua, ho'ota, ba'ue'ilo'ru ba'ta'ba basa'lateli, melau'ye'ivi'lu'ei'oh.
And I also think it is the responsible, responsibility of the Fire Protection Associations.
Kap'evili'ki na'ka'na'ore, ki ma'ikarabelo, ah, me'kato, ya'utibela mullo.
To educate the, the, their own members.
Utusha maloko, ayo'ona.
But that is not put on this, eh, act.
Fe'ala, ta'va'ya'oka'oka'ona mo'mulao'ku.
I'm not sure if I'm missing the point, but I think it was omitted.
Akitso'ore, kitime'chinaa fe'ala, ki'bona'ore, o'karitoku'eku.
To clarify, to make it a point that FPA is trained their own people.
Ho'kunisia'ore, di'FPA, ki'chuan'ati'ou'li tlata'oh ba'twachon'ona.
But above all, I need, I think that this whole program has missed it.
Ki'bona'ore, o'dima'ka'chika'mka'atwa, na'ki'bona'ore, nan'oe le.
Because.
Kal'eli, tabingbo.
Because the bill says amend, there's where they've, they've made amendments.
Ga'ore, omula'okaka'ani'oh, o'kulela, ta'va'ya'ipetusho.
They've made insertions.
Oh, le, le'itse'ni'oh.
There's, there are substitutions.
Le, 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 t'eligu'cha'ou'chi'ama'akatwa t'eligu'we?
But the community does not understand what they, what, what it entails.
Fe'ala'se'chava'asukuisishi'ore, t'elani'chika'mka'atwa, na'ka'facha'oka'ute'ulela, dirai'ni.
Thank you very much.
Ke'olebo'oh.
Eh, ikabu rangeli'ibza'ina.
Ch'awalira'shi.
N'diranza, putitonga'hatan, dipuxela executive mayor, Max Livia.
Let me humble myself.
Puxela Speakera'sha'ina.
Mayor, our Speaker.
Dipuxela avurangeli'ibzanga'chika'ana monkla, t'usuka'ka'Parlamente, d'aka portfolio.
The.
Dipuxela avurangeli'ungu'adzuna'ibzanga'tsama'ansisika'wanati emi mssita'ina.
All leadership present.
Tokozani absheni.
Greetings.
Eh, mina vitora mina, ni'fikile'lishava.
I'm fikile'lishava.
Ebukosini, kandu'andu'ingumalo.
I'm from Duane Royal Family.
Councila'ra, Tabiso Masihu.
I'm on that Tabiso Masihu, the Councila.
N'diranza kukensa, avurangeli'ibzanga'fika'ana'ibz'seketela, yamukela, Max Livia, eh, la'kukombela shika'wanasi Speakera.
We request your妈妈's Livia.
Ab'itheli'ibz'chika, b'ita, b'ita engetela nakambe ku, i'kota'ku yamachweni, nati'jonzula'iti va'anga'chika'ana to.
This leadership must come again so that we can learn a lot.
Di'ma'ki wanganga. Lu'endi'funa'ka.
Am I a traditional healer?
Ab'iuson'to.
I'm from Bisont, helping people.
Eh, ndilekuru'leni, shinene, lo'ko' u'kumaku'no'va, ile'kutsheni.
I have a concern when fires are being burnt.
Na'ka, emava'ju' ambana'ambana.
We help.
Lo'ko' ambana'ifika'noveni, i'kuma'no'va'itu'ini.
Yeah, I help many people using these, eh, apps, so if they burnt, they're burnt in the forest.
Eh, lo'ko' nova'itu'ile, ah, i'koti'ku'vo'ona, mir'le'ifane'ipuna'wanu.
So we're not able to get these, eh, apps to help our people.
So, kunkaritima'kata'ku isanze'ena.
Not only burning the field?
Na'ina va'maki, ah, ilaisen'eva namakaya himakanzilo.
So even we, parents, let's take care of our children at home.
Ndinabu, t'ivin'gofu, ndit'chule'eva'ana himakanzilo, vambi'ri.
So, my children got burnt because of fire and water.
Ish'ankoka'angofu ku'hiti'ilaisa'ilaisa'vanava'ina.
So it's important that we must take care of our children and ourselves against fire.
Ngofu, ngofu, se'si, inkaro'asixika.
Especially now in winter.
Eh, xingwanisakona, i'ku'ambela ku, enza'ulole, air enze'le'ki matiko'ipua.
Again, we ask that these departments go all over our villages.
Ku'ambela'ana'leka'va'ba'ava'navabuti'la va'za'aka.
Also us from those who are smoking, our brothers and our fathers.
Ava'ilaisilimbango'wa'ina.
Let them take care of our environment.
Ina, haskota'kutilaisa.
We're able to take care of ourselves.
Kungova'layana'laya, ku'endla'katimistiku'vanava'ina, vatiku'mavapsini, kuna'vanava'utala'subel'eh.
It can be there and there where we find minor mistakes where we do not get burnt. There are many children in our hospitals who are burnt.
So, n'inga'jinkari, sakutala'air, national'is'us'kominu, iranza kukensa.
Without taking more fire time, let me thank you.
Avurangeli'ibza'Parlamente, d'aka portfolio.
Leadership of Parliament.
Irhalala ya'ongu'ina.
Say thank you very much.
Inkou.
Eh, n'tanza'ku'nbingle'ela, non'ke, n'pingelele'Parlamenti, u'wel'la'ifige'la pa', eh, mpumalanga, eh, Bushbuck Ridge.
I agree to all, I greet Parliament, I greet eh, mpumalanga eh officials.
N'tanza'ku'bo'ong'aku'usi'Parlamenti, nam'la'ikunile u'wel'la'ifige'la eh Bushbuck Ridge.
Thank you to Parliament for coming down to Bushbuck Ridge.
Lu'loksuk'tanza'ku, lo'ko'ngoba'anga'ina, omak'ong'anga'ina.
Ngu loksuk ntsanza ku, loko ngoba ngani, oma kufanale skulumaitindo, siya u chela ba, nima ra oma ni fikilela du tana, subuana ku si, di tindleveni, ktau fikilela, ktau finyelela, neti kalu di.
We are happy to see you here because we know you are the right people to listen to us.
Ntsanza ku si ku boongaga, na le pi, na le pi lenisle telleo na, siya i boongaga ku, na lama programs la wa, stokona kuwa funza, skono kuwa visisa, ku si mlilo, sfanale su kushenjani, oro sfanale su kukue menjani logo.
Thank you very much for the program that, the bill that you have brought before us and the programs that come with it on how to deal with fires.
Ina kusasa asta uka na kuwa atu ku si, loku sfanale su kukue menjani, nima ra oma ngabe ni kashana, ni kulumaguma TV, su suka sanga kuwa ku, ku si gui.
Thank you so much for coming down. Now we'll understand what to do when fires strike. Um, when you speak on TV, we don't hear everything that you say. When you are here, we can listen to you appropriately.
Eh, na loko niya fu si, loku ntsanza ku boongaga ona, si boongaga ku si, si funze siwe, no malele pi le na ute sato kobe ka si funze, skono kuwa atu ku si, sfanale si sebendi senjani, no ku si mlilo, si kueme manjani, ma ngabe iko na enza wenie.
We have been taught how to deal with the fires and now we'll continue doing that. Now that we have the bill, we have a guidance. Thank you.
So nje ngala eh pu, she pesa ku shiwe, ti indole ti ne ngage ngisho, nje ngoba ku shiwa ku siwa ti tlala, lagitsi sinemvelo leni, neti nyanga, ma traditional hilas akonala, ngisho na base depe, nbedala, ato funamitsila.
We have lots of fields, we have lots of forests, we have lots of natural resources. Even our traditional healers from Deben also come here to get their traditional medicines.
Va ti nyala, nje ngoba se ni si funze si le ku ga alhe ka kuulu.
Now that you have taught us, thank you.
Se inza banai, le ilupako ka kuulu la pa le si bo na ngasi si banesitzi ngona, siya ku bo na u go ngelu, ku ni si funze sa uka. Pesitela kuangasi governmenta, angasi letela tin sita ku si tibe koona la pa ku oma ni spaliti, ngoba utola ku si, oma se guni mlilo la, siya iko in sita, i, i, i loksana, mtlambe le indole lele sita ku yi nyange ku pele. So government, oma nga supplier ku beni tin sita tibe koona, bo ku nga kueme ka logo, ngoba lo mlilo, a uko soa nginza ba ebando ku pele, la banyo besa bashilo ku si uko soa ivi nange la iti ni.
The big issue is the resources. We don't have resources. We request that at the municipal level, there must be resources to fight the fires. The fires are not caused only by the people who smoke. It's sometimes caused by lightning. Shall we have resources?
Siya kela, ngoba, siya su ku bo ne mtlambe le ku bo depe, ku bo depe, nukumba wo Cape Town, oma guni mlilo, siya subu ne ma helicopter, ai uti sha, ma ra lagitsi, ngoba ngani, singe nao ma resources. Yu resources ya kona utolo ku si mtlambe iuwa, ne ma firefighters ya kona as nao, agaka funze, si nyengelele lelele ya ne, la kunama group la mani, siya shelo besa imvelo iya nyamala.
We don't have resources. We don't even have eh, eh, trained firefighters. We see on TV when there are fires in Deben, in Cape Town. We see helicopters roaming around, eh, extinguishing the fires, but here in Bush Park Ridge, everything just burns down because there are no resources.
Eh, ngoba, loko oma ku fa imvelo, na banva na abanoa ti luto, nenembi lo tzi na kuwa tzi na, ane ge sakona ku la pega, ngoba ngani le imvelo isuke ingase, ingaseko.
When the nature, the nature is extinguished, our children will not know about the nature and us, our livelihoods are affected when there is no nature.
Ena, kun nga bo utola ka la ku si, oro skuluma ngi ti tlala, ku si, skuluma ngi ti tlala ku pele, mage la pa bi ka kuluma ngi ma kuakwa, kuneli ti indole ti ni, la ti, bitaku si ti chi ere, siya ti la li ti indole edo.
It's not only about the trees, it's also about the fruits that the other mother was talking about here, the, the, the jereles, all the wild fruit that is there, is extinguished when, is distinguished to, what's this?
Yeah.
Extinct, extinct when fires come.
Si, tene sanga katu, se siya boongaga ku, ku si ni fikile, si si teni ka kuulu, nyala, uka na ma tlemi, si tlemiles, ne ma foreste, la iha ti, ma ra as nao ma resources ku si sanga vla mi kuakwa, ku si, limlilo oma iko na, na lama fire kaati ku si, skono ku vimbela lo mlilo, asko ku ba na, du le ti indo, siya ti kela ku si governmenta. Agaka si letela, ngaba ma nasnige teli ve, no kuwe as nao ma resources.
Thank you very much for coming to us. We request that you give us resources. Right now, we have claimed land. We are given the land, but we don't have resources even to build roads to, to, to get to those. Avoid those fire. Places that you are given.
So, siya boongaga ku, loku luma go, I'm Ruth Sifunza.
I am Ruth Sifunza.
From what age?
From what age?
Dwar Slup.
Age Dwar Slup. Thank you.
Zukumpushela, ngwen.
Greetings, all of you.
Lu yanga imala itula mbazima.
It is tulani mbazima standing before you.
From Awatri Mkhulu.
Awatri Mkhulu.
Eh, nda I support a bill eh.
I support this bill.
Ntela nranza kesa ku beni loku parliament, iko te li ku beni ita, iti nelela ita, to shoku beni riye ne, ruakati ko.
Also grateful that parliament is here to hear our views.
Eh, le shenanga tabula shon, takumbela ka ku beni our government, ai ringeti ku beni chinjai, ti ndelela ta ma zahelo.
I ask that the government must deal with the way we smoke.
Ngwen, lokuwa ku, the smoking zone in our areas.
We must have smoking zones in our areas.
Nileka ti main road.
Even our main roads.
Iku li, shuwa kasi afekta, ima ka ti ya, ya, ya ma zahelo, ku beni ban, apa akut, ku beni ban ka controller eh, lokuwa siwa, baku me, ku, na be ku za, u za, kuwa na kuwa, just throw eh, eh, for, kuwa na kuwa nyan.
People have uncontrollable behavior when it comes to smoking. They just throw those cigarette bars anywhere.
Le shi, etela kasi, ifaka our life in danger and then it contributes ka ku beni se, wisa ekonomiya eh food.
That ended up. That end up endangering our lives and destroying our economy also.
No, ni kese.
Thank you very much.
Absheni.
Greetings.
Ndi kensile ku kumankaru akundu bo la bo la.
Thank you that I got this time to speak.
Ndi ranza ku sheweta va insva ina, ba ku telle parliament.
Let me start by greeting our visitors from parliament.
Esi imo imo savona sa uha ambana.
All protocol observed.
Pushela na mayor wa inoale Bush Park Ridge.
Also our mayor, Bush Park Ridge mayor.
Na lava famba kanavona.
And Inter Ridge.
Na lava vanga tsama, le inza uka mina va akati ko.
And all, and all the residents, I greet you.
Eh, ndi ranza ku bo la ku, isankoka kuwa ebona governmenta tabanu.
It's important that we see the government coming to visit us.
Eh kuwa loku urmu no, onga u bo rangeli, a onge ku tu ku kontrola ka kumbeku enteleb sinene.
So if you don't see your government coming to you, sometimes you misbehave or you are not able to do good things.
Na ye na, mu fambiswa eh, na wa mayora ange entencho.
Even our executive mayor, there's nothing she can do without your support.
Eh, mayor, Inos Mukonto wa Inyaka Vaterfal Land claim.
As Inos Mukonto of Inyaka Vaterfal Land claim.
Ina, eh claim mi sawa, inati title di ti, ta ti poshinta, twenty-four poshins tala bushi, katya ekta ta four thousand eight hundred.
Were four thousand, four thousand eight hundred hectares out of twenty-four claims we have made.
Le ti tingana, si la la sama gum trees.
So we have gum trees.
Kima katanzilo, ilatu melaka kongo.
So there is where a lot of these fires is taking place.
Singwayana si vanga eh, ina, itira kale ma shatini, singuana si vanga eh va akati.
The cause of these things, some are caused by our workers there in those field and some the residents.
Kunava nuwa wa itira ka kuale ma forest ya ina.
Some people who are working in those forests.
Va ira va nuwa wa itira kaleka forest.
So there are people who work there.
Loko va nuwa vanga hakeliwi, contractora va isano vava.
So those people, when the contractor is not paying them, then they become angry, they burn the forest.
Kunava nuwa kuwa na si fu.
People who have got eh, eh, those who have animals.
Va isano va ku dya nyile bzi nsa bzi tamila.
So they burn the forest intentionally so that new grass can crop up.
Eva nguana lava va engeletaka ku ona himakanzilo.
Those are some of the people who add up to this problem of fed fire.
Kambe kunwayana ifane, la uta eh Maspala wa ina la buji.
Sometimes we must also look at our municipality, the Bush Park Ridge municipality.
Sa fane la ku a enja tu workshop ka va akati ko himakanzilo.
The municipality must conduct workshops when it comes to fed fires.
Because va nuwa ka ina va tolela ku tsama valanzele liwa.
Our people, you know, they want to be followed always.
Ba jonziswa eh maka ya ku bi akanzilo.
They must be taught about the, the danger of fed fires.
Ambi kurimati ma nenema na ngosi.
Even water itself is so dangerous.
Ena, si lo le si mbiri va nuwa ti kuinu vengeha ni, anteka mati nanzilo.
People won't live without these two things, water, eh, these two things, they're there.
Se isankoka ku Maspala a jonzisawa, ku workshopa, nu ku le si, na nzilo nama, ti si lo le si ngana ngoka, si la ishiwa.
So the people must be taught that water and fire, these are very important things, they must be taken care of.
La va ku lu isana na minzilo, va fane le va engeti ruwa va ta la ku, la vanga ku, vava varu ku le na la ku, melaka minzilo ko.
Firefighters must be added so that they can help because those who are present now, there are few compared to the ones we have.
Ah, si bo na tinza u tu wayana ku tsami ako, ba tse anseka na ku timela kuva varu ku.
So sometimes fire happens in some buildings and they can't reach there because they are far away from the places.
Iku mu no na, ambiku ru sahar, si na ambu melaku sahar niya la ti kuinu.
Even animals have a right to live in our country.
Ku chaka no va ku dya nasuhar, nasu itso swan.
Fed fires, they, they kill animals and even little insects.
So sala wa ku Maspala wa buji, ava na tu workshopo, na tu komitite tinga datira, na tu magata minzilo.
I recharity that the Bush Park Ridge municipality must have workshops and also some structures who will be dealing with this issue.
Itako ta ku si velas, lo le si enleka ka sa minzilo la ti kuinu.
So that will prevent these things.
Maspala wa buji parkridge, ekonomiya itako la loko akuwa na si su su sa ku slanganava, workshopa, iko ta ku la isha ti ku ra, na rasa seka ridge, hella mas.
The economy of Bush Park Ridge will grow a lot if the municipality will take these things very seriously.
Ndi kensengo.
Thank you very much.
Eh, ntsaka non, ne, ne, ka program director.
Eh, anyan fele, nukumbela, nukumbela one minute niya na bo. Eh, Tatuuli did not tell us his name.
Baba ami zelanga betorangu ina? Forgive me, I was very angry.
Ni ku duin.
Ni kensile wa.
Thank you very much.
Vitora mina, Inos Mukonto.
My name is Inos Mukonto, Inos Mukonto.
Ndi rangeli, le intlima le bushi, ya sa mi sawa ya fun, four thousand eight hundred hectares.
I'm a leader of the land claim of the people of Bush Park Ridge. We have claimed four thousand eight hundred hectares.
Anu la va li bi to nze?
Inos Mukonto.
Na guru wa i supporta billi le?
Inos Mukonto.
Ndi supporta hundred and ten percent.
I support it hundred and ten percent.
Ntsaka non, ne, ne, ka mu fambiswa antero.
Good day afternoon, eh, eh, good day, program director.
Shika ngwe, na vatiro glory from parliament.
And also your colleagues from parliament.
Ndi pushela ka vangir bza ina, bza Bush Park Ridge, under Madam eh, Executive Mayor, our beloved Mama eh Sylvia Ngumalo.
And also greetings to our Mama, Honorable Councilor Sylvia Ngumalo.
Shika ngwe, namranziwa wa ina, Mama Speakera, Mama Ruth Rahanya.
And also our beloved Speaker Rose Rahanya.
Na ti councilara, na ti officials in kuatu le ti ti assista ka kanti rolo uwa ni.
And all councilors and all officials who are assisting in this work today.
So iku ti ti visa, vitora mina, eh mina mandla Madonsela.
Amanda Madonsela.
Eh, ndau la nu ma kakona nu ma Chuvukani, Manielete Tlasta.
I'm from Chuvukani, Manielete Tlasta.
Ah, ansi ka vangir bza councilara Imelda Mabunda.
Under the Councilor Imelda Mabunda.
So le uma kako, tani loku ni vulin, iluku suwa na Manielete Game Reserve.
So we are next to Manielete Game Reserve.
So va ku shaya nyana, vanaku iuma halamananga, and correct iuma mana.
So some say you are just coming from the desert, that are correct, you are from there.
So, Manielete ina le nga na twenty-two thousand hectares.
Manielete has got twenty-two thousand hectares.
Na eighteen field ranges.
Eighteen field ranges.
Of which, these eighteen field ranges according to ina, ngaluku suwa, eh, are enough.
So we look, when we look at that eighteen field ranges, there are a few, very few.
So I, I takensata ni, le shi, lokuwa ne, eh, vanganyan, ti u want to official, ti loku taratsali nku, if vanga eh, addressera ma ka ku itlis, lokuwa ediwa, ntsayo ya forty.
So we'll be, if you can add forty field ranges, because we can see that you are writing down, so we hope you'll take that up.
Wa ini zenu vula le shua, nu kusungu na, edi ma ta ku, ishulei ngata yo na lanua, ya ku hisa, kambangu.
So why am I saying that first? Because the issue we came here for, the issue of fed fires.
Eh, ishui wayan le la va ka ku, na van, la va va ona ka ti game reserve, va fane ke va make a shock, ku fansiavo, ye bieluini, vanava ina fshtafu, and also na municipality ina, van, va ku tila, ku timela minzilo, lava ina.
So this issue involves that we must have some eh, eh, protection against fire, where also we must have these firefighters to help us.
So, angeta ti ngofu marito tani, le shi, vanganyan, vama kuero, va vla vli, nswaktaala.
I won't say a lot because some of our, eh, some of my fellow residents have said most of the things.
Marito yame, before program director, tani vitan vya, ali noa, iku supporta eh, the national, eh, what, what do you call this? The National Field and Forest Fire Amendment Bill, number twenty-four of twenty-twenty-one.
So I second the amendment as mentioned.
Marito yame ya ku etelela iku, the leadership that we have now is quite correct. Thank you very much.
Lastly, I said the leadership we have here is correct.
To be peace officers.
No, no, section fifty-six.
But what I want to request is we are undated. If you look at our budget, S L L and combine all the four local municipalities plus the district, look at the budget for us to discharge environmental management issues. The budget is solidly.
Now, if you look at it, it's not bad. It's more than that. It's bigger than the money. You have to spend a lot of money. You have to spend a lot of money.
And forestry is one of the N K P economical program in the district.
The fire, it's a big fire. Let it go, let it burn. It's burning. It's burning.
So can you imagine if there's a huge fire, the economy of S L L is crippled?
No, I don't think so. It's burning. It's burning. It's burning.
So I'll plead if I was still checking our allocation according to the equitable share, I think we, if my memory still serves me well, I think we had fifteen run seventy-five for community services.
Now, if you look at it, it's not bad. It's better than it's been. If you look at it, it's fifteen point six. It's a percent of the money. It's not bad. It's not bad.
For rural municipality like Bushbuck Ridge, it's very likely.
You have to spend a lot of money. You have to spend a lot of money.
So I will plead with members of parliament that if it can, if a special grant can be set aside such that we are able to survive. Because for us to appoint the peace officers, we need money. For us, for Ubabuslinda to buy enough fire trucks, we need money. Fire hydrants and what if you, we need money. So I will plead with parliament. I support the act. Thank you.
If you don't believe it, I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it.
We are happy that you support. Of course, you did not tell us your name.
I was telling you.
We will sleep peacefully because you support. But why? Well, I said, I'm Tappelo Shavang. Tappelo Shavang. Yes. Tappelo Zivamre.
Is it on? Can anyone hear me? All right, we're going to take the last round of hands if it happens so. I think we may start on this side, the two people that had their hands up previously. Do you still want to raise your hand?
If you look at it, it's a big fire. But I'm saying it's a good one. It's a good one.
Anyone still want to speak?
It's a good one. If you look at it, it's a big fire.
Ma, you can come. Anyone else here on this side? I have no preference of women or men.
It's a good one.
Okay, there's no one on that side. Is there anyone on this side that still want to speak?
It's a good one. If you look at it, it's a big fire.
Come on. I see some. Any, thank you very much. Anyone else that wants to speak?
If you look at it, it's a big fire.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, this might look like then, this is the last round. So think about it again if you want to say something, please, and raise your hand.
If you look at it, it's a big fire. It's a big fire. It's a big fire. It's a big fire.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're a good one. There's a hand here. A hand.
No. Wait. Okay, so. How do you feel?
It's a big fire.
I'm glad.
I'm glad.
That fellow says the leadership that we have in Bushbuck Ridge is quite right.
I'm glad.
We are happy with the leadership, but we want to check if you are fine.
It's a good one. It's a good one. It's a good one. I'm glad.
Okay, so is the councillor?
Yeah, the last one.
Okay, so the last speaker would be the councillor. And then we'll invite the speaker. Do you have an MMC responsible for environment?
If they want to speak, what is the one?
Oh, ah, good, good. For environment. Okay, that will be the first person to speak and then the executive mayor. No, behind the councillor, there's no one. We want the councillor to be the last.
The councillor, the secretary manager.
He is a public member. Yes, the councillor will be the last. Arkobe Gema.
I'm going to kiss the road. I'm going to walk fifteen.
I'm going to kiss the road.
I'm going to walk fifteen.
I'm going to kiss the road. I'm going to walk fifteen.
And I'm going to kiss the forest.
I stay next to the forest?
I'm going to walk fifteen.
We see many things that are happening in the forest.
And there's a possibility that the children will grow up not knowing animals
that will have been made extinct by the fire.
I'm going to kiss the road. I'm going to kiss the forest.
I want to make a plea for you to help us to educate people not to make fires because our children are going to end up growing without knowing the animals and the birds.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
I am very much happy that you are here in Bushbuck Ridge to come and enlighten us about the fire.
I'm glad.
I thank you. I greet you all.
I'm Emily Mutoko.
I am Mary Emily Mutoko. You know what I'm going to say?
I'm going to kiss the forest. My councillor is Tenping Kosi.
I live here in Bushbuck Ridge in Ward Nine and my councillor is Tenping Kosi.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
To me, I'm very much happy on this Sunday that we are visited by important people.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Who are going to tell and inform us about the fire.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
The fire, it's a problem in the area and it also brings a fire mine.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
Here in Bushbuck Ridge, we live by working manually with our hands. We chop off the block of woods that are being sent to the mines in the area.
The biggest fault is supported by the trees from Bushbuck Ridge in the form of what we call mine timber. I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
Here in Bushbuck Ridge, we know many people say, when they leave their areas, they say, we are going to see the traditional healers in Bushbuck Ridge. And those traditional healers.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
These traditional healers build their houses with the grass and also the poles that are from here, Bushbuck Ridge.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Escom is also supported by the poles that are from here.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
We thank you very much. We wish you could visit all the other areas, not only Bushbuck Ridge.
I'm going to support it. I'm going to support it. I'm going to support it. I'm going to support it.
We support this whole. We are going to, we are definitely going to benefit from your visit in Bushbuck Ridge. Why is it called Carltonville?
What?
Why is it called Carltonville?
Yeah, it's a free state. We're next to Bellemi Hospital. I'm going to kiss the forest.
Mark Carltonville, why is it?
I'm glad.
Why is it so?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Why is it so?
Yeah, it's a good one.
Why is it so?
I'm glad.
Ah.
I'm glad.
Why is it called Carltonville?
I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
That was the conversation between the chair. I'm glad. Why is it called Carltonville?
That's it.
I'm from Carltonville. So when you spoke, how do you call Carltonville? I thought you were addressing me because I'm literally from Carltonville.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
Where's deep number two?
Deep level, it's a twenty seventeen. I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest. The biggest fault, the biggest fault is mine timber. I'm going to kiss the forest.
We wish you all the best. I'm glad.
I'm glad.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
First of all, I'd like to thank the time I'm given.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
I'd like to thank our visitors from Parliament of South Africa.
I'm Solita Kumalo.
My name is Solita Kumalo.
I'm twenty-nine.
From what, twenty-nine?
MP Stream.
MP Stream.
I'm the councillor Salinas Tole.
And the councillor Salinas Tole.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
What to think about this issue about fire fires?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Want to add on what has been said?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
They talk about this Kwakwak trees.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
So out of the Kwakwak tree, there is a juice which is manufactured from that tree, which is called shilumbe.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
There's also a tree called mrozo.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
That one comes out of it, a very strong furniture.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So those original furniture, the strong ones from Bradlos, Russell.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
They come out from that tree.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So even the wooden spoons you are using to cook food.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
And also all those traditional tools used for milling.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So there are those trees which, out of them, come very strong tools.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So we must not burn these trees because they are very important to us.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Thank you very much for that.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
Greeting to all people who have gathered here and all our leadership.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Also greet our mother, the speaker, Ruth Rahanya.
I'm going to kiss the mayor.
Our mayor, executive mayor, Silvia Kumalo.
I'm going to kiss the president.
Greeting to all the parliament members.
Florence Manzini.
I'm Florence Manzini.
From what, twelve?
I'm from what, twelve?
Hmm. So. I'm going to kiss the forest.
A lot has been spoken.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
What I want to say?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Concerning the agriculture?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
And also the issue of fire fire?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
My request concerning fire fire is?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
And also concerning agriculture?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
We have cattle, as you know, that were from rural areas.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So that they help us, so that we can have places where we can keep our cattle safe.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So when we talk about fencing the areas where our cattle graze?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So when we fence, when those places are fenced, also that they must be demarcated so that fire fires must not occur that much.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So when we grew up, there were such places like fire guard where government was doing that.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So we request that they employ people who do those fire guards.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So that that will prevent that we no longer have such many fire fires.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Because when fire fire occurs?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
It destroys many things.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Our children only knows of bananas and apples.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
There's so many trees in the forest they don't know.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Which our children can eat and they are very healthy.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
For example, there are certain fruits called mapovana in our language.
Mapovana, that's suguri.
And also some fruits called tizuguri.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Mapovana, tizuguri.
Those fruits, tizuguri, mapovana.
Matzila.
Matzila.
Makua.
Makua, those fig trees.
Hmm. I'm going to kiss the forest.
There's so many of them.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Our children no longer know those because of this fire fire.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So out of those fire guard, maybe we'll be employed to do that job.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
So we thank you so that you encourage us to take care of this thing.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
May God bless you that you help other people.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm going to kiss the forest.
I'm from a ward committee. When we meet the people, I will also encourage them and teach them that we must not burn the forests.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
The MMC. I'm going to ask you. Cash.
I'm asking, I'm asking you.
Nicely.
I'm blessed so.
Nicely. We really want to hear the views of the councillor.
Before you proceed, MMC. I'm going to kiss the agency.
Yesterday in Kwacha.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
We were with the MMC.
I'm the MMC.
MMC Sheba, yes. So it will help us to interrelate the views of the MMC and the views of the MMC.
She had said she was going to come, but she wanted to go to a funeral before.
So we have accepted her apology and did not want to pressure her.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Yeah, and to you, MMC, your views, there are views that we will take, that you are going to deposit to us. But our expectation is that issues that affect the local municipality that you are leading, you will respond from there.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Are you sure?
Do we agree on that?
I'm going to kiss the forest.
Thank you very much.
Now, I'm the programme director.
Let me take this time and thank you, programme director.
I'm Sambo Prince.
My name is Sambo Prince.
I'm a ward councillor at Ward Twenty-One.
I'm a ward councillor at Ward Twenty-One.
For the MMC for public safety in Bushbuck Ridge local municipality.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
I'm going to kiss the issues that are still being raised.
I don't have any issues to raise.
But our community, they've got issues still being raised.
I've heard that our communities have got issues that they are raising.
It was an eye-opener for us.
It was?
Eye-opener.
I'm going to kiss the forest.
The community raised the challenges that the fire-related challenges that they experienced from time to time. But the challenge is to get the resources.
The challenge that we have, the main one, is the resources.
I'm a village boy.
I want to indicate that. I have looked after the cattle and I'm also from initiation school. In this season in Bushbuck Ridge, this is the time of initiation schools. Normally, what happens is, at the end, towards the finishing of the initiation school, we light, we make, we light the, what do you call it, the whole initiation itself. In our tradition, we don't have to look at the fire that is being started. We just go forward. We know that you'll end up being a heap of salt.
So it results in the forest.
That result in the fires that continue in the forest after our departure.
Our timeframe is only one month.
If you check right now, the timeframe for the initiation school is only one month. It becomes difficult for us as a municipality to can decide to go and flatten the area to remove all the things, vulnerable things in the area so that fire doesn't spread to other areas.
Hence, I've indicated or limited the resources.
Hence, I've indicated that we've got limited resources.
So, one other thing, we have got to have a fire protection association at the local municipality level. There's only one district and it becomes difficult to check these municipalities.
We've got only one who's in the district and it becomes difficult for that person to can check all the municipalities around.
Also to emphasize issue are peace officers.
Another thing that must be emphasized is the issue of peace officers.
We implemented this bill.
So that we can implement this bill.
In responding to the issues still being raised as communities?
Responding to the issues that the communities have raised? We are trying our level best to have the awareness campaigns.
Members of the parliament, please assist in making a good awareness in terms of resources.
And also ask the members of parliament to assist us so that we can have fruitful awareness campaigns. Without a waste of time, I say I thank you.
Councillor Sambo, Councillor Sambo Prince.
I'm glad. Councillor Sambo Prince.
If you have seen him?
Lemoni.
If you have issues of fire, you know where to go.
If you have issues that relates to environment, that's the man.
Without waste of time, executive mayor, I'm sure you want to ponder on one or two issues that have been raised that relates to the municipality.
I'm going to kiss the forest. I'm glad. Programme director? Thank you, Mr. Programme Director. Economic pillar in Bushbuck Ridge is agriculture. The main pillar of source of life in Bushbuck Ridge is agriculture. And forestry. And forestry. Agriculture, livestock, food, whatever. When we speak of agriculture, we speak of the cattle. When we speak of agriculture, we speak of the cattle, the sheep, the goat, and many other animals that prevail in the area.
So we are saying as a municipality, we are supporting this bill, itlo hona guritusha as we are moving forward.
As the municipality re re reteka mola okaka nyaho kaguro to ritusha, gharile garitjala pele.
Unitarunaya fire rescue and that eh cylinder nose re restructure guri ibe kadat standard sa guri refitalele guri, if ever there's a challenges in terms of fire, rakhono gubaria, you rescue in time and rescue kapilapi.
We are upgrading our unit of fire, like as Mr. Cylinder we could know, but we want to put it in a position that it will be able to be useful in terms of extinguishing the fire that can exist.
Yeah, so on the issue here, fire, by which I mean fire protection, which MMC was talking about, it means each and every municipality, that's our plea, each and every municipality must have one so that we can't rely on the district.
Eh, gharile itatabe niyachi lejamo lolo, keni niterenyaka gurumaspalo omolo muwane, kobe li unitiye guri, reskata rap feleleja ilorore, itsepele fele maspaling omogolu wa tikulu go.
Yeah, and the district innali five, four municipalities under them, so ri nyaka guri, each and every municipality have a fire protection airborne.
The district has got a fire, four municipalities under them, so we want each and every municipality to have their own fire protection unit.
In short, remasparawa Bushbuck Ridge.
In short, as the Bushbuck municipality.
Other issue of the National Field and Fire Act nineteen ninety eight, nineteen ninety six, we are supporting the bill with those amendment re pele, so Raikanah guri reko berixan ali luna, and if ever rea edimbezo, we'll make sure guri redera those awareness, people must understand what is happening in terms of fire and not everyone must light fire and then unattended. The issue of the coma, I'm aware, when we left those areas, I'll leave a little brown, so the elders must be taught to by body or whatever to prevent fire, you so kamhono guri, the bill ayepili, thank you very much.
We support the bill, we will also, we will also encourage even the elders that even after the completion of initiation schools, they must try and devise other means, to try and see means that can be done, to try and protect and prevent the fire from spreading further into other areas, but anyway, all in all, we support the bill.
Thank you very much, Majoro.
Eh, keleboha Majoro, mayor ra.
Firstly, kindly lies with the office of the MMC, Shiba. Yesterday, she made a commitment in Tembesilehani that she is going to invite traditional leaders, where possible, invite us to come and further speak about this bill.
Eh, kira ta gur u kopaneli eh mu councillor Shiba kawarma banerile karibere walela leena, afelelecha arile, utata adiyagur otoko beli kopano leba etapile basi icho, aragona kopano ngewu, utu odiyagur ler narite, oridipuledi shano chegadi itagodi iwebe loguri, rekamu ka.
Now, if possible, eh, the speaker is here, eh, she's responsible for public participation. Eh, if it means we must come and speak to ward committees about this bill, we are ready, we will dissent. Eh, Bushbuck Ridge is not very far, eh, logo tama hauteingbalwa bze laguru, this place is far, there's nothing like that, eh, it's very near. Eh, so at the level of ward committees, let this communication be there, eh, CDWs, all these structures that you relate with.
Eh, kama tati speaker aso onamo, viale kiri awa, onali taba jonache uchikamkaka jonaa, lady councillora kadei wana kausui, ai vetaba gur kobe lepuledi shano leku kagaano, origano kane kane talirvi ji, gao ten nga sakole, rekano kitima rata rata mo rata radula, ra lukishija secha ba sa Bushbuck Ridge.
Nyani gutela guri, le, 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 le man, lady councillors, eh, not only the eight wards, yes, though, and I suspect each and every ward here has a part of felt, eh, because of the nature of the area and it being rural, the fact that it's in Bushbuck Ridge, yes, so there's bush in each and every ward.
Eh, lady councillora lejonetlasona guri tlebiwana, kawo rekitsepa guri, mo, gongolo gongolo, wote ngoli ngoli, ino vali, pisana yana, ah, ah, ilogorokano bawa abalo kwanaga lego, ikata ya so fele, kagore rea ziva, lili inali epolela lero flomo, ki Bushbuck Ridge guri kefele, kadi kwa, rea ziva guri locha mukutau, ikona lo kwanaga lego, tikakuja didire.
Yeah, eh, the committee might not be in position of all the, to respond to all the concerns that have been raised today.
Komiti ikanu va ilogoraka ema emo, ah, okata ya arabela, matwi nyego kamkaka ona anchijomole kumi.
But there are eh two or three issues that we have picked up.
Fela kona lidi nklaje pedu bache taru, cheredito pille go.
For instance, there are issues that relates to the portfolio committee on agriculture.
Oh, niya matala kona lidi nklaje diama go portfolio committee yatemo.
Eh, bo mebali bo tatiwa, on the right and the left are responsible for capturing these discussions.
The ladies and gentlemen on the left and the right, but mo otako swara, chedi ngochadi nklaje ilogorakama twinyego, alenale lesecha ba.
So at the right time, reto di sefa, te di angoa agriculture, ra di soko portfolio committee agriculture, te di angoa tourism daya, go tourism, te di angoa land and so on and so forth.
Oh, wanamo reto thoma, ra di khetula weyakama goro, cha weyaka, weyatimo, cha akawayatimo, cha weyakatukonyana ga, cha akatukonyana.
Eh, but one speaker, I think is Tabiso, Tabisa, Tabiso Mohale.
Oh, na le, sibule di sesengoki, opuleka reki Tabiso Maerani.
Mohale.
Oh, Tabiso Mohale.
Yeah, she said she was, she works on working on fire program, her department.
Ulu xuma lenane onu la, la, la milo, kahuru.
Eh, she spoke about, eh, I suspect she wanted to speak about this bill, I want to clarify two things, one, this is not an act, it's a bill.
Eh, ye kasa mola o, ki mola o kaka.
So, a bill can only be an act once it has been signed.
Mola o kaka nyaho, oka, okanafela goba mola o, eh, wo shetu osainwe.
Osainwe ki president.
Oh, osainwe ki president ya na.
So, this is a process to make a law.
Ye ki isalitsi la, ya tula ga nyo, ya ku, ya ku idiyagur itelebe mola o.
So, we are consulting and formulating a bill so that we make a law.
Kafa or, garu itseni fasai, lego liga guri ri lukishé ilogorretu la molemola, or itele kono kofetwa mola o.
But she raises two pertinent issues.
Fela, unchichi di nklaje pedi chetu thoko.
Eh, she spoke about eh, the bill not speaking about owners who do not follow, eh, who do not comply, and what are the penalties.
Obule chika bena gava ilongori, gavalateli melao, logor na, dikoto cha wana itala bacha mukutama.
Eh, it might not be captured here memoali on the bill, but it is captured in the principal act.
Eh, mukuma kadi mohali, ikanu va ilogoraka yego wana mo fele, kakuwa aragamo la o, omogolu wana, iko na.
Eh, it covers the penalties and the offenses. And the code, the code, it's either it's a fine or it's imprisonment. So the principal act speaks about the process towards a conviction and how do you appeal if you are convicted. I also picked up an issue about, oh, the, the, the fire, fire, fire protection associations. This bill that we are consulting you on. Over and above the municipality empowers you as the community to form a fire protection association. And it compels the department and the minister to train you. And if they don't do that, then we come in. But flowing from these discussions, Executive Mayor, today. We will engage with the minister. On funding of the fire protection operations. And I see you are clapping and you are just clapping for a fish when it swims. It's our job to swim, so you can't clap when a fish swims. Yeah, but we really appreciate, in fact. But section seven of the act. Not the bill, this is a bill, but the principal. Compels the minister. To, it provides that the minister should assist in the formations of fire protection associations. So we will speak to her and say in Bushback Ridge, there's only one fire protection association at the level of the district. And there are four local municipalities. The recommendation is that they must have one per municipality. Yeah. And the last thing from my side.
I'm the one who spoke the most from all the people who are here.
Yeah. We will leave the contact of Chileca, Madubela. Maybe in the office of the speaker so that if there are people who want to make written submissions on the bill, can submit to them. Maybe I'll about copia principal act, she can also assist with that.
And maybe when you are looking for the copy of the principal act, she can easily.
From my side, I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Executive Mayor and your team. I want to thank the two honorable members officially, they have been a very powerful team over the past three days. The parliamentary staff, all of you, including the protection services, the South African police services and the traffic department, what do you call it, traffic department, yes. Yeah, we want to thank you, but most importantly, we thank you, the people of Bushback Ridge. Even next time when we come. I invite now Honorable Weber to do the closing remarks and chat away forward. I will never speak again, thank you very much.
I think we really would like to thank every single person that is here today that contribute and share their problems. Because it makes our job easier to know what is happening on the ground and what's going on here. So thank you for that because without you, there will not be any failed fire laws. Thank you for that. The process now is that we are going to give everything and all your submissions. We've listened to everything, we've written everything down. We still have to go to six other provinces after Mbumulanga. And then all the information will be submitted and will go to the Department of Fishery, Forestry and Environment. All your submissions will be taken into account. The committee draft a report that will go to the National Assembly. After that, the bill will go to the National Council of Provinces. Once that is approved by them, the bill will then go to the president. And then we sit with our template. See you Bongo for everything today.
Yeah, thank you very much. I had said I'm not going to speak again. But I'm invited to speak. And I must now deliver the good news. Yeah. Okay. It's an instruction. I'm giving an instruction by Chilek. That they are going to request that we must not all leave the hall. They are going to call you row by row. Oh, the protection services there, can you see that man?
This is the person that bulldozes people out of parliament, that's him. If you want to cause troubles, we call that guy. That guy will take you to task.
Okay, so they are going to, to call you row by row from the back, no? And then they must give you, you are going to get food as you leave there.
Can you give me a round of applause, please?
Thank you very much, thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.